Okay, I'll call this meeting order at 6:03. As a reminder, if you would like to speak before the commission tonight, please complete a blue speaker form and hand it to Stephanie there, our clerk. And roll call, please.
Here.
Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Patel.
Here.
Vice Chair Blea.
Here.
Chair Fink.
Here. And tonight's pledge of allegiance will be led by Commissioner Lee.
All right, would you join me in the pledge? Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And as another reminder, any member of the public may address the commission on items within the commission's subject matter jurisdiction, but which are not listed on this agenda item during public comments. However, no actions may be taken on matters that are not part of the posted agenda. We request that comments made on the agenda be made at the time the item is considered and that comments be made -- comments be limited to three minutes per person. Is there anybody that would like to speak during public comments?
No, sir.
Okay, and on to item four. Is there any member of the staff that would like to make any additions or revisions to the agenda?
No, sir.
Okay. Any commission members? So, moving on to consent calendar. All matters on the consent calendar are considered routine and are to be approved with one motion unless a commissioner, staff member, or a member of the public requests separate action on a specific item. Is there any members of the staff that would like to make any changes? Members of the public?
I moved to a point.
You're good?
Second.
Twenty second. Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Charleston.
Aye.
Commissioner Lee.
Aye.
Commissioner Patel.
Aye.
Vice Chair Blea.
Aye.
Chair Fink.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, and on to public hearings. At this time, we will conduct eight public hearing items. If you would like to speak before the commission tonight on any of these public hearing items, please complete a blue speaker card and give it to the clerk. Following the staff reports and opening of the public hearings, I will call those who have submitted a blue speaker card to speak to the commission. We will begin the public hearing with item 6.1, and Mr. Norris has a presentation.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Welcome to maybe your busiest planning commission meeting ever. Your first public hearing is a continued item from your last meeting in May, and this regards two retail buildings in the proposed Lewis Retail Center down at Hamner and Schleisman. So just to recap, for those who weren't here for the last meeting, this is a development review for two multi-tenant buildings called Pad Seven and Pad Eight, about 8,000 square feet and 6,000 square feet. Project site, as I mentioned, is down at the southern end of Hamner where Schleisman tees into it. It's outlined on the slide on the screen there. And within that project, highlighted with the red numbers seven and eight, is where those two buildings are going to go. And let me just touch on this slide real briefly. Our applicant Lewis put this together for us. I think it helps answer some questions that came up at the last meeting. So if you recall from the last meeting, there were several other applications that were in front of you. One was for a proposed restaurant down here, which is going to be a Hero's Sit Down Restaurant. You looked at Starbucks drive-through. You looked at potentially a drive-through here, made a recommendation on that. Looked at these buildings and continued that discussion. And then the rest of the site that we didn't talk about, now this corner here is a future application that we don't have yet. They intend to bring in a gas station tenant there. And one of your items tonight is considering whether to allow alcohol sales at that future gas station. And then kind of screened out here are a couple other aspects of the project that were just shown in kind of a green color at your last meeting. So what they're showing now is just conceptually some things on those. This is proposed to be a hotel pad, so they're showing a hotel on this parcel here. And then this whole piece back here is about seven acres of land that Lewis is in agreement with the city to purchase. City would purchase that land and then build a combination civic center and library on that parcel. So what they've shown over here is just some images of, you know, what that might look like. The exact design of that civic center would be subject to obviously a number of public meetings. It's a major public facility that I know the city council intends to go out to the residents of Eastvale and talk to them about what that should look like, the exact features that should have, and so on. But hopefully that kind of explains what those green areas were on the maps last night. So getting back to this project, and if we're kind of focusing in on that one corner, so these are the two shop buildings, again called Pad Seven and Pad Eight. Over here, again, is a gas station. You also see on the back side, the north side of the parcel line, are some homes on Mississippi Drive that back up to this development. And one thing that the commission wanted to talk about last time that they didn't feel they had enough information on was what the appearance of this project is going to be from those homes. They wanted to make sure that the residents in that neighborhood, and particularly these residents, knew about what was going on and had a chance to look at detailed drawings. So we'll talk about that in a minute, but the applicant did go out and made that outreach to the neighbors, met with some folks, and they can report in more detail about what the outcome of that was. But on this drawing here, you see two lines called A and B. Those are sightlines. And what they did was they drew, kind of sectioned through. So this is to scale, and you can see over here, these are those homes, and we looked at the second floor vantage point because the ground floor is blocked by an existing wall in those backyards. And the second floor vantage point, you can see here, we put the sightlines on it to show that from that second floor, if you're looking at, say, the bedroom window, you'll be able to see the landscaping and probably the backs of the buildings and maybe some of the roof. And if there's equipment on the top of the roof, we always require that that be screened so you wouldn't see, for instance, the, you know, the heating and air conditioning, you know, some things that are on top of the roof. And that's the case for both of those buildings. So again, if you go back here, they did one section for Pad Seven and one for Pad Eight. So Pad Seven is on the top and Pad Eight is on the bottom here. So that kind of explains the views. It also shows how the fence line is a little bit interesting out there. If you look on the top section here, the property line is this red dashed line in the middle. And the existing wall is actually north, about 10 feet from that line. You get a little further east to the other section, and they're both in the same place. But again, if you go back here, you can see that there's the fence line and there's the property line. So there's actually more of a separation than it might appear from looking just at the map. So the plants of the buildings haven't changed since the last remodel. This is really, has been an opportunity for the applicant to meet with the residents and put together some of these additional illustrations. So these are still the buildings that are being proposed. We went into this in a lot more detail at the last meeting, so I don't think we need to go through these. Obviously, if you've got any questions, we can go into them in detail. We did receive one comment from the public, which should be in your package, looking at the southwest corner of building eight and asking for some more treatment on that. And then to address that view issue and to clarify one issue, staff is recommending these two changes to the conditions that were presented to you back in May. So one is a new condition number 20, to plant trees between those buildings seven and eight and the residences, that screen the buildings but don't get taller than the buildings. So if you go back to the sightlines here, we were assuming that the folks who live there like to be able to look out and see the vista, because you do have some nice views from there, out over Silver Lakes and down to the river. So we would recommend that they don't plant really tall trees so they're not blocking the view more than it needs to be. And then the other condition is a revision to condition number 35, which was already in your package, to clarify that the applicant is responsible for frontage improvements in the right of way. And that just gets to some issues of coordinating street improvements and landscaping improvements between the city and the applicant. So as I mentioned, Lewis did meet with residents. They worked with us to get a list of all the property owners, actually went through the Neighborhood Watch Association for that entire neighborhood north of their project, sent invitations to everyone. They met over in the Gateway Center. Eight residents came. Again, the applicant can tell you more about that and give you a summary of what the discussion was there. We haven't heard about any of those residents after that meeting, so we assume that they were all more or less pleased with what they heard. We re-noticed this, although it was continued to date certain, we did send out another notice so that folks knew about tonight's meeting. And that just breaks down, you know, 417 property owners, et cetera. And staff's recommendation, as it was back in May, is that you recommend approval of this project to the city council. This is scheduled to be considered by them next Wednesday, so we'll be reporting between now and then on what your recommendation was. But that is our recommendation, and we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Cool. Thank you.
No, I'm sorry, we don't have the staff report available. Well, I want that show just a diagram of all the pedestrian connection paths to the center. And essentially, everything becomes connected along the street, sidewalk, from the street connecting the shops, the future gas station, up into the civic center, from the right of way down into the project, and certainly property that's coming out, and also hotel, hotel connected to the street and also future city center. So ultimately, it's going to be a very profitable development. And just some details, it's a little unusual in their density here, very, very low compared to what we're actually saying with the, this is about 10%, not including the civic center, but with everything else that's being built. It's not about 10% coverage, or no, it would be about 25%. Our landscape areas, code requires 10%, we're putting in 23%. The last one here, an issue related to the slopes, if I may, I might be able to scan out.
Rick, do you, this one has red on the top corner, did you watch that?
What the first thing I'll show you, we have three of us back, I'm going to tell you, what the first show is, is the top of the rim edge area, or silver edge here. Essentially, the greatest side of the gray, the tributary area, our storm range, that flows on the slopes today, the lesson, by the time this is grayed out, the slopes are lean and fractured. And then the dense slopes, you have a series of terrace streams, and then they feed into the stormy structures. So ultimately, much less tributary water, but running down the slopes. So that should take care of that issue. Other features of the site, most of the views for the residents are being maintained. Most of the residents, especially in the back of the shops, six and seven, the residential tier, they'll be buffered from any parking areas, annoying areas, you know, on the south of the project, by the view, plus the setbacks and other buildings. So we've got quite a substantial problem there. Other items, if you ever have a problem with the border on Hamner, the street edge is pretty, pretty dangerous. So that will all be beautified and enhanced and upgraded, new sidewalks, the street lights. And then traffic circulation overall could be improved. There are a series of street improvements, the project will be responsible for that. And then here, there's also a study for potential city on that, the city, which will be a city project for all those street improvements, should enhance the traffic flows in this area, which will understand the problem at it. We did do a committee outreach meeting. Unfortunately, we did a lot of residents, but those that did show up, they also were very positive about the project. They were very excited about potential use, like he wrote, the shops, the potential restaurants, they were all very excited about those potentials. So basically, the plan to move, we were very well aware of the city, and we had gone through, basically, this diagram with the residents, and explained that the city will, as Eric mentioned, for the civic center, is ready to become a project. The city will have a series of committee outreach meetings, and ultimately, create a design that both city and the government will be happy with. We also, we also wrote a hotel, will be a very high quality, it's a very upscale street, which is a high-quality project. They have different amenities, there are jail, beauty roads, pool area, the whole of Silver Lakes, where president was important, reaching this plan. So the pool area goes on the south, not the north. The Hero's Restaurant, which a lot of people know, or the Chio Hills, which was across the river side, which is Hero's. Basically, the riverside, and they have that type of rooftop, kind of fun, lively, family atmosphere. And the Starbucks. Oh, and Hero's, we mentioned that from the east side, welcoming to residents from the west, they'll have the doors, outdoor night area, patio, which is where the Silver Lakes. And Starbucks also, also have their patio area, basically set up, things that are in the coffee shop. And the building will be very highly articulated. Eric, is it possible we can share one of these in there?
No, we just have PowerPoint shows, sorry.
This exhibit shows the enhancements we made since the last meeting, and then in your package... The second down, kind of this, all different enhancements, building name, to both the north and the west elevations, which due to staff, we were articulated enough. So looking back at that, things like an architectural course, the top of those elements, and we'll have heavy texture plaster to finish, which is articulated with wheels. We also have color changes to any of those elements. We have some architectural sponsors, and sort of large steel sponsors, which kind of works for the side of the street, will be proposed, green streets, which will be shown from the east door. And I heard a show in daytime elevation with those green streets, the colors like that would be different, to do the drive-through, to see all those, and all those, all those operations.
Mr. Chair, could I interrupt for just one second?
Sure.
Rick, you've won this battle. They recommended approval of Starbucks. We have a long meeting, so could we focus on seven and eight?
I will.
Thank you.
So then getting to the crux, between Pad Two, Pad Two, which is this partial, and then the seven and eight, the shops that are made. We have been, we've heard the message, city will refer new, for the cool users, that needs restaurants. So we have been reaching out to new concepts, new to me still. If you have, if someone uses, say, Pad Two, and they have a drive-through, we would be sure it's not, they'll talk a little bit, we'll be much higher, more trained if you know. And we are reaching out to, I think of the map, we're finding a low southwest grill, which the concept is going to California, it's kind of high quality, it's next, and it does have a drive-through, but it's also about a large, I think, or tiny, park and park and bakery, which also looks like another thing with, doghouse, weird garden, a haven, and salt pit, which was a location of Riverside. So between Pad Two and shops, we expect that between those two areas, we'll have some on the four and 10 retail and work at the restaurant users. So out of that group, we're trying to pin them down at this point. And one thing we would ask for, one thing we would ask for, and I don't trust to be able to pin down, one of these cool users of Pad Two, would be a group of drive-throughs. Many of those users, it's for a critical of their business, they have those, so we would ask for that approval. And if there's any question on the setbacks in the neighborhood building, just elaborate a little bit on what Eric said, we're fine with the conditions as far as the heights of trees over a period of time, but I don't even see a sight map here. But we intentionally try to group the trees that we get from the backs of the buildings, anticipating that these users, we took a laboratory guess, we have a wonderful deal of renovation. So we tried to group those trees such that you can walk in the future. And we can work with residents, we need to specifically, so we're more than happy to do all of that. So that will be it on this one. I would look, whether they have some questions, and maybe reserve time to answer any comments we've covered.
Okay. Thank you. And at this time, is there any speakers from the public on this item?
No, we don't.
No? Okay. Well, then I'll close public hearing on this one and open commission discussion. Start with Commissioner Lee.
Okay. So I was very vocal last time about outreach into the public and especially the residents behind it. So you're saying the meeting that you had with the residents, that, you know, about eight of them showed up, you said all of them were positive feedbacks, basically, for your project?
Yeah, all the cops, you know, were positive, but there was only, her only question was the library, how they didn't leave, so before I was on turn, I had to ask.
Was, was any of the eight residents, one of those homes that are abutting, the development?
I don't know, we probably have a question.
Okay. And I don't see any public comment cards.
No, we don't have any.
Nope, I'm good.
Commissioner Charleston?
Two things. Eric, can you put the picture up there where it shows that property line, where there's a 10-foot difference between where the wall is and where the property line actually is? So my fear is if a neighbor decided they wanted to use all their property, they could break that wall and then come out and go to their 10-foot line, fill in that up, and it would look kind of strange compared to the rest of the houses back there. But they could do that.
They absolutely could. It's their, it's their property, yes.
And just to be clear, it's about the first seven houses that we tried to handle, it's about a certain season point here, it's about the first seven houses that had that condition, and then it goes to the other condition.
Well, I'm not sure why, when they, when we developed that, or when the county did, why they allowed that. That, to me, is really, just doesn't make any sense at all. I guess the only other thing that I really have is if condition 20 says that we want the trees to be at 20 feet, then we should also add in condition 20 that if the trees grow over that, they must maintain them and groom them to stay at 20 feet. I'm good.
Vice Chair?
Yeah, regarding the screening in the back of buildings, to add to that, you say you're willing to move trees around to accommodate the desires of the residents behind this door?
Yes.
So if we could put in one of the conditions that they meet with the residents prior to that, and get their written approval on the location of the trees, so we don't want them coming back and having any problem. Do you have a problem with that?
As long as we have, at angles, to the best of our ability, we can deal with that, and run situations where you go repeatedly, you never find them, or get all of them, so that.
Okay. I'll agree to that.
Okay. Well, sorry, go ahead.
I would say, in that language, to the best of the ability, in the judgment of the planning director. Very good. Very good?
Yes.
Okay. We're fine with that.
Okay. My only concern is the, with the setback, it creates sort of an alleyway. Am I correct in that assumption or perception, between the property line or the wall?
Well, it creates an area that's mostly landscaping and has a sidewalk in it for access to the rear.
Okay.
We don't see a lot of activity back there. There'd be no vehicles going...
I'm assuming a fence line that the residents will be, will have, right?
A brick wall.
And then, so there's going to be yet another wall for the retail center?
No.
No? Okay.
There's still landscaping, there's a lot of fencing.
Yeah, so the existing wall that's there stays, but there's no new walls going up.
Okay. Cool. Well, I have no other questions on this one, so I'll open it for a motion. And we have two additions, right? So we would have to motion for those additions to the conditions?
Well, let's go back to the slide. So if the commission wishes, we'd ask you to add to your motion, to add condition number 20, and we can add to that condition that the applicant is to work with the applicants, or with the residents to the north, to the satisfaction of the planning director, to adjust the location of those trees.
And the height.
And the maintenance. And to maintain them at the desired height. And I believe that's it. So, and then also revise condition number 35, which is in your package.
Is there a motion for that?
I'll make a motion to approve item number, well, the, what is this? This is a major, this is a major design review, right?
Major development plan review, yes.
Yes, for pad seven and eight, with the addition of condition number 20, and the revision to condition number 20, and the revision to condition number thirty?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five. That's my motion.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Charleston?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Patel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Oblea?
Aye.
Chair Fang?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, on to agenda item six point two, project number PLN 17-20015, for Lewis Retail Center at the Palopolis, conditional use permit, number PLN 18-20019, for alcohol sales at a future gas station convenience store. And you have presentation, Eric?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, again, this is a continued item from your last meeting, and what's at issue here is a proposal by the applicant to obtain a use permit to sell alcohol at a convenience store that would be built as part of a future gas station, which we just talked about. This was continued from your May 16 meeting. Again, the project site is the same. That's a really good site plan. If you recall, this is the northwest corner of the site. We don't have an application for that yet, but the general location of that gas station is right on Hamner, on the north side of the extension of Schleisman. Just to, it's a little bit complicated here, so Lewis is the applicant who applied for the conditional use permit. They're working with Chevron, who they intend to be the operator of the gas station. Chevron has not yet submitted their application, which will come in separately to actually build the gas station. So as we always do, we remind the commission, the use permits are granted to run with the land, regardless of who owns the land and who's operating it. So just keep that in mind. We expect that Chevron will be the operator, but the use permit isn't specific to that, and it would apply to anybody who runs that gas station. So in terms of nearby permitted alcohol sales locations, and a lot of this is going to be familiar to the commission from your discussion a few months ago about the 99 Cent Store, which is right across Hamner. So we're showing on this slide all the places near here that are permitted to sell alcohol. So you recently approved a use permit for the Heroes Restaurant. They don't have their ABC license yet, but that, that location has been approved, at least by the city, for the sale of alcohol. And then we have the 7-Eleven Store at Hamner and Riverboat. Those are the only places out here. There's also, not in Eastvale, but down here, not shown on this slide, is the Fieldhouse Restaurant down in the Silver Lakes complex. So you have one off-site sale location, and then two onsite sale locations between the future restaurant here and the restaurant in Silver Lakes. And then the gas station, which would be actually here. So one thing we look at when we review these for the commission and the council is how close they are to other locations. This particular location is not any closer to other stores that have off-site alcohol sales than already exists in Eastvale. We've shown on this slide all the other places in town where you can buy packaged liquor to take home, and you'll see that there are clusters in various places where they are, you know, as close as or closer together than this location would be to the nearest other off-site sale location at the 7-Eleven Store. We confirmed with ABC that Chevron Corporate, which is the intended operator here, has no existing ABC violations. That was a concern that came up in the 99 Cent Store appeal hearings at the council. They had an ongoing violation or recent violation, Chevron does not. We talked again with police and schools, and we have Lieutenant Martin from our police department here tonight, I believe, so he can ask, respond in more detail. So there were no concerns by police, the first bullet should say, or ABC, the alcoholic beverage control, regarding the proximity of this project to schools, or to the church, which is now, rather than being adjacent to the proposed location, which is across Hamner. And this is also a great slide. Imagine that there's an aerial photograph underneath here. And what we're showing is, at least he can read the numbers, we got that right. So just, just some numbers here. From the proposed location, which is down around here, up to the 7-Eleven is about 1,400 feet. To New Day Church is 659 feet. We're going to try and pick up a different version of this.
There it is.
Shows weight there. Okay, just make that bigger. Okay, so, so going back up here then, so from the proposed location over to the elementary school is a little under 3,000 feet, 3,000 feet to the middle school, 3,200 feet to the high school. So those distances are a little bit greater than they were for the 99 Cent Store across the street. In staff's view, the most significant of those is that it's now, now adjacent to the New Day Church, they're not sharing a parking lot. The other distances, we don't think make a whole lot of difference. If you're a kid in a car, driving from Eleanor Roosevelt High School to go find some illegal booze, driving a couple hundred feet more across Hamner is not going to deter you. So, but staff and our conversations with police and ABC also confirm that we didn't see an issue with those proximities, that they're far enough away from the schools. In fact, far more distant than ABC would ever require when they issue a liquor license. So there, there are a number of conditions on the proposed conditional use permit here. Most of these are fairly standard, keeping all the beer and wine at the back of the store to prevent people just running in, grabbing something, and running back out. Limits on the sales of, the hours of operation, not allowing single cans or bottles less than 22 ounces, anything smaller than that, having to be in a multi-pack from the, from the manufacturer, and surveillance monitoring systems. So these are conditions that we work out with our police department, and again, Lieutenant is here to talk in more detail about those law enforcement issues, if you need to, if you have any questions about that. As with our prior public hearing, even though this was continued to a date certain from your last meeting, we re-noticed this and sent out again the same notices, we haven't received comments specific to alcohol sales. We have received comments in opposition to the general idea of a gas station at that location. So staff's recommendation to the planning commission is that you recommend to the council the approval of a conditional use permit for the sale of beer and wine in this location, subject to the conditions of approval. You can recommend approval of the project with additional changes or conditions. The second bullet item here, this is scheduled for the council to consider at their next meeting, so you could continue it, but the council is expecting to be able to hear a recommendation from the commission when they meet next week. And then finally, in addition to, or as an alternative to any kind of approval, you could recommend denial of the use permit. And that concludes my presentation. We're here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Now open public hearing. Does the applicant like to make a presentation specifically for this, please?
Chairman, thank you, special details, my own comments are very easy to work with show, this would be a corporate store, a franchise store, and we're going to be just seeing for this one, there's new two, you know, racist projects that truly, sort of created the influence afterwards, and they're approving us, and that'd be even greater, and then really for the CP role afterwards, and everything else, so we're trying to be proactive with the, we do have a Chevron team here, who are typically speaking for the project, and if you have any questions?
Chairman, commissioners, my name is Gary Sevigny, stand in architecture, representing Chevron. We have Sergio Ramirez, CPR, representing Chevron, on the phone with us, with Chevron Global Security. Chevron is proposing to sell beer and wine to the store, the last cycle assumption, staff will, very, very detailed, very clear, and just a couple extra points, disappointing about this is, this is a company incorporated, company owned and operated store. Chevron has approximately 300, 350 company owned and operated stores in Northern California, Southern California, and out of those stores, approximately 200 that have sell beer and wine. So they have a very strong history, they have a very strong training program. New employees come in, they are, they are tested for all of their knowledge and understanding about age-related sales, for backup and alcohol and beer and wine. Once they have their training in, on an annual basis, the employees are then tested for that, if there's any problems, there's strict consequences where they're employed. They also do things like, they have a mystery shop, shopper program, where they'll have people come in, maybe underage, or maybe in coordination, distinct operation of local law enforcement, to make sure that, that they understand the rules, that there is no populations of selling vendors, minors. They have a whole list of sundown, a list of sundown, I believe they call it, where they have a whole checklist, as it starts getting dark, making sure rooms are closed up, making sure things are secure, making sure that there's no boy bringing, that there's nobody drinking alcohol on the site, that seems just not acceptable. And Tom can back me up on this, but they have a very good relationship with the local law enforcement, and jurisdictions that they have stations, and the store managers, employees are encouraged, all can ask for help if it gets to, so we'd like, thank you for your, your consideration this evening. Chevron is acceptable to all the conditions that were presented by Sevigny, and were available, or any questions that you may have.
Thank you. And is there any speakers for this item tonight?
Yes, sir, we have one speaker. Betty Wu.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Betty Wu, I live in New York, so I'm a resident here. I spoke before, so I'm probably not here, I'm not going to say too much tonight, very much, we stay the same place as last time in May. From point, standpoint of the residents, there are 18 C codes, driving accidents, where you need to use, the city, which is doing business, has to use suitable, and these laws for the gasoline stations, is applicable, I don't think so, I drove by multiple times to the game, and it seems to me those are the size laws for the gasoline station. And if you do not have enough of safety other zones for the gasoline stations, away from the residents, you are basically bearing a hung bomb for residents. When accidents happen, when you run, and you lose, you're not going to keep it alive on the bus. And for the art process, I'm, I'm speaking about before, the recent last lives, people through that D O I incidents, even just a couple days ago, we had a lot of incidents on these, on, on, so we do not need another alcohol sales, alcohol store.
Thank you. Is there any other speakers tonight?
No, sir.
Okay. Then I will close public hearing for this and open up commission discussion for this item. Commissioner Lee?
So mine's pretty simple, I don't think, so the FD, looking at the agenda item, it's asking for the alcohol sales. So even, without even giving a thought to the gas station element of it, I recommend the applicant to listen to the council meeting that happened with 99 Cent Store. The community was very, very against it, saying this is right across the street, and, you know, approximated to the New Day Church, and the pastor passionately spoke at that council meeting to oppose the alcohol sales of 99 Cent Store. So if you actually hear that hearing, I actually, I attended the hearing, and if you actually hear it, you will understand, there is no way I'll be, any other council member, members will be voting for this, and I'm on their side, too.
Commissioner Patel?
The only concern I have, and I guess this is more for staff, is this on? Okay, I just don't hear it. Okay. From a consistency standpoint, that 2:00 AM, I know with Heroes, it's just the access to it, it's normally an hour before closing, I know this isn't a sit-down, it's not a restaurant, but there is a restaurant across, in the same vicinity, and I, I guess I, I don't want to see somebody, if, if, you know, I'm leaving town and I'm trying to do my shopping, or whatever, and, you know, I'm running around, I don't want somebody leaving one place, they can't get it, and then going across, because, hey, they're open an hour later. And so what's our timeframe from a consistency standpoint? Isn't it 1:00? At Heroes, or?
Well, Heroes' conditions, like, like all restaurants, require them to stop serving an hour before they close.
Right.
And then the drop dead for that is like 2:00 AM?
2:00.
2:00 AM, I mean, they can't sell drinks after 2:00 AM anywhere, but if they close at 11:00, they have to stop serving at 10:00.
Correct. Correct.
So we didn't put a specific time on it, just whenever they decide to close, they have to back up an hour and stop selling. We took, we haven't put the same kind of condition on off-site sales because the alcohol typically isn't being consumed there.
Right.
Which is our concern about people in the restaurant.
But it's still an access point. So do any of my fellow commissioners remember with Heroes, were, were they two o'clock closing, so therefore it's a one o'clock? You don't know, don't remember?
They varied it. They said depending how busy they were.
Okay, but what was the latest?
Still isn't hour, the latest is two o'clock in the morning.
Is two, okay, would be the latest at Heroes. So, you know, Chevron is, is a great corporation, regulations, public shareholders, you know, the police, there's no violations, which to go to Commissioner Lee's comment, I think is very different because my understanding is ninety-nine cent store did have violations. So the only thing I, I would bring up is whether two o'clock is reasonable or because in the same parking lot, there's a one o'clock. Even though California requires it cannot sell outside of six to two, I'm looking, I guess, more for consistency, maybe to stop it at one AM. That would be my only question, to see if there's any challenge or as a city, we would be able to do that.
Yeah, well, we're just conferring with, with that. This is a use permit and you have the ability to put limits on the hours of operation. So if you wanted to do that, you certainly could. We'd recommend that you state some reasoning for that. For instance, the fact that it is a, you know, in the same development as a sit-down restaurant, and you might just want to tie their hours to the, the stop of alcohol, you know, the cessation of alcohol sales at Heroes. So if Heroes stops selling at one o'clock, then Chevron stops selling at one o'clock. And if Heroes shuts down alcohol sales at eleven, then Chevron, it would require coordination between the two, but I think that gets at your issue, which is you don't leave Heroes and walk across the street to Chevron.
With any restriction, though, it's got to be regulated. And so I, I don't think, and I wouldn't want to put on that private sector to have to coordinate, hey, are you closing at ten forty-five? I, I'm, I'm just more concerned with the one o'clock on the maximum. Nothing, nothing happens good after one o'clock at night anyway, so.
You, you could certainly change that condition to read instead of six AM to two AM, it could be six AM to one AM.
To one AM, okay, that's my question.
And what I, what I think we're hearing over here is that the reason for that is its adjacency to a restaurant. And that that's the reason.
Yeah, thank you. That's all I have.
Commissioner Charleston?
Well, my question, or I guess my comment is, because I really don't have any questions, everybody's asked what, what I was thinking about, is, you know, are we ready to make a decision? Should we be making a decision on a gas station when we don't have Chevron even coming forward now? The perspective that you're going to be there, I, I love that idea. I would have a question for Chevron, and if a resident is concerned about a gas station blowing up, when's the last time a gas station's blown up? I don't, I don't actually remember that happening in quite some time, so, you know, it's hard to answer a question that we don't have the facts on. But there has been a lot of contentious debate about how much more alcohol sales do we need in the city? And it's not just from the residents right there, but every time we approve another one, somebody else has something to say about it. And we know it's going to be contentious, so. And then my question would, or my comment would be too, is we hear the same thing from each company. I have this many stores and this percentage of them sells alcohol, but you still have thirty percent or thirty-three percent that doesn't. And that was the same thing we've heard from two other former applicants. So it makes it to where the answer is, well, I guess those are doing fine without it, too. I know that we get used to going to a gas station and I guess, personally, I've never bought beer from a gas station in my life. If I'm going to the grocery store, that's where I'll buy it, but usually if I'm traveling, that's not what I'm worried about. I don't want to drink and drive. So I think this is something that we have to really think seriously about, of how do we want to move forward? But I would like that answered, when is the last time a gas station has actually had a fire at it or blown up, but near a residential neighborhood? I, I don't know, do, can we even get that answer?
We can get that answer for you, Will.
Sergio Ramirez, who represents Chevron. That's something that we would have to look at. I can honestly say I'm not a career with a gas station blowing up outside of a movie or some show. But there are measures in the dispensers that, for example, if a car hits it, it shuts it off, so that gas is not flowing out and not making moves. The tanks are underground, they have the same safety measures, everything, a big socket, gear valves to shut off the flow of the gasoline, and then your tanks as well, but you don't need a scale anymore, and install that. As far as when's the last time a Chevron station blew up, you can link that up, that Chevron will actually find you.
Right. Yeah, that, that was my curiosity, thank you. And I agree with you.
Same during earthquakes, so.
Right, right.
Gas station blown up during earthquake, 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 and that.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it for me.
We, no, we've, we's.
You've closed the public hearing?
Yeah, we've closed public hearing, so unless you guys have a.
Mr. Chair, you can reopen the hearing if you'd like.
Are you with Chevron or are you?
I'm a developer or this, Brent Ross, so we.
Okay.
He can't, let's open.
No, yeah, we're. We'll, we'll, we've already closed it, so yeah, we'll, we need to move on.
Your requirements for security around such a place.
Thank you. Thank, we've closed public hearing, thank you.
Mr. Chair, since my name was brought up, I wasn't, I was not against it, it was because of ninety-nine cent store having a violation at that time. During the hearing, in the council meeting, you can clearly see that we need to treat New Day Church the same way as we treat schools. So the distance matters in that regard, and that was the reason for why council denied it, and that is the reason why I'm, I'm considering denial, just to be on the record. It wasn't about the violation.
Thank you. And Vice Chair, any comments or questions?
I don't have any questions, but I do have to comment. A CUP is a serious, a serious thing and, and it is supposed to be, that's why it comes to the planning commission, it's just not to be handed out to anybody who wants one. And to issue a CUP to a development that hasn't come before us yet, doesn't sit right with me on the first thing. And that being said, the gas station that close to residents, I think, is, is not a very good idea. They say the chance of fires are minimum, but there's, you never know what could happen, but even more of the fumes that could be emitted from that gas station, those residents are very close to that gas station. And I, I don't think it would be a good idea for a gas station to be there. I don't think we have any gas stations that close to residents in the city of Eastvale. They're all offered by businesses and roads and streets.
We don't, but there certainly are many in other cities.
Yeah, but I got to worry about Eastvale, I don't worry about any other city.
Well, Mr., yeah, Mr. Chair, one, just one thing, between last meeting and this meeting, the comment period on the environmental impact report that was done closed, and one of the questions we got from that process was to look more at the health risks of the gas station. So there is, in the final environmental impact report that will go to council next week, it's called a health risk assessment, that was done by, you know, a qualified expert. They determined that a gas station here would not pose a significant health risk to the neighbors next door. So that, that information's on record and the council's going to consider that next week when they consider certification of that E I R.
Okay, well, that would be my objection. So I wouldn't be in favor of a CUP because we don't have anything that's actually come before us, and I'm not just going to pass out a CUP for a liquor license to anybody. And my opposition would also be the opposition to a gas station being in that location, so. That's the comment I have. Thank you.
Well, I mean, well, to me, a, a gas station's great for revenue. It's close to what would be a hotel built, so there's convenience for shoppers, for, you know, the customers to stay at a hotel. And, I mean, I'm not that old, but in, in my memory, I haven't heard of a gas station blowing up yet, except for movies. I know it's a lethal weapon, I've kind of recalled that, but, oh, yeah. But as Commissioner Lee mentioned, we had, you know, great hurdles and, and concerns from residences in regards to the beer and wine sale, just in that vicinity. Also with Vice Chair Oblea, there's, the project's not before us, and we're issuing a CUP ahead of time, so to me, that's kind of putting the cart before the horse because there, there could be numerous things that occur between now and then, just because of the, the alcohol license. What I'd like to see is, I know this is going to go before commission, I mean, not commission, council, you know, maybe there's an outreach we can do with New Day, just to get their import, input, like last time, I know council spoke with various sort of stakeholders, the community members, and also Pastor Ed at New Day, and they sort of came up with, you know, a direction then, and, I mean, that's a problem with presenting a project, I mean, presenting a CUP before the project. You don't have a lot of the stakeholders in the community giving their input.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, we did send New Day a notice of this hearing, so they've gotten two hearing notices for this project, and we have not received any comments from them.
Did anybody call Pastor Ed?
I did not call him specifically.
Sometimes things get lost in the mix and, and he spoke passionately last time at the council meeting, so, I mean, as Commissioner Lee mentioned.
And I'll, I'll certainly reach out to the pastor between now and next Wednesday.
And the major concern there is that the church does minister to youths that are, sort of have addiction issues, and so that's one of the major concerns for us, or for myself, in that aspect. But the gas station itself, to me, I wouldn't have a problem with it, but like I said, it's sort of putting the cart before the horse here. That's just my comments.
Can I ask one? I have, I have one more question, so I want to make sure we're clear. We're not actually passing judgment or voting on the gas station itself. We're only talking about alcohol sales for the potential gas station. That's it.
Yes, you're, you're making a recommendation on a use permit to sell alcohol at a store to be built on this site at some future date.
That, that's, that's what I want to be clear on.
The, the gas station is not in front of you, has not been applied for, that'll be the subject of a whole nother set of public hearings before the planning commission.
Okay. I'm, I'm good, I'm ready, ready to vote.
So you, there's a potential to be a liquor store back there?
Yeah, potentially, yes.
Yeah.
They, they would have to, probably wouldn't be a liquor store because your use permit is only for the sale of beer and wine. So it could be a store that sells just beer and wine.
Any other additional questions, comments? Could we have the, the, the recommendations put up there?
Options.
Or options? Well, then I'll, I'll open for a motion for this project.
I'll make a motion to deny the CUP. I'll second.
Roque?
Commissioner Charleston?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Patel?
Nay.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, Vice Chair Oblea?
Aye.
Chair Fane?
Aye.
Motion passes four one.
So Commissioner, and those in the audience, a reminder that this will go to, this recommendation now goes to the city council next week in the same room at six thirty on Wednesday. They'll hold a public hearing and make the final decision.
Got it.
Thank you. Actually, for six point three, I have to recuse myself because I actually live right next to the property line. This is behind Mr. Bootsma's property? Yes, so I'll give it over to Vice Chair Oblea.
My honor? Okay, let's go on to item six point three, Prado Residential Development by Lenar Major Development Review. Do you have a staff report? Mr. Norris, do we have a staff report?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair and members of the commission, Melinda Lim, who has been elevated, I think the planning manager according to the slide, is here to make your presentation tonight.
She promoted herself? I like it.
Typo.
I like it.
Thank you, Mr. Norris, good evening, commissioners. Before you tonight is a major development review for residential, residential development. Here's a bird's eye view of the proposed project. Sliceman, Sliceman Road is to the north of the project and the Cucamonga Creek Channel is to the west of the project. Here is a proposed site plan. There are two access driveways, one here and then one here. The main one allows cars into and out of the community, whereas second access allows only exit of the community. Here's a view from Sliceman Road. The grayed out building here on the left-hand side is the Bootsma House. Here's a view of the recenter as you enter the community. This illustrates a couple of the attached home elevations. To the left is the Monterey style home, and to the right is the Tuscanese style home. And then here's a couple more of the attached home elevations. The Spanish style is to the right. This is a northward view of the central Basile. It is the largest Basile within the community. And then here's a typical detached home view, the one that you see on the corner right here is the Plan Two Tuscan. Now let's talk about attached homes. There are one hundred and seventy-nine attached units and two, and it makes up two-thirds of the project. Here's a, a full front view of the Spanish elevation. You can see there are plenty of architectural elements to it, such as the shutters, building plane breakup, you see like pop-outs, and pot shelves. Here's a view from the side and rear elevations. And there are five different styles for the attached homes. They are listed here. Now on to detached homes. There are sixty-four two-story detached homes, and they're on the eastern side of the proposed development. Here's a front view of the Plan One elevations. You can see the siding and framed windows. A condition was proposed requiring that the wall height that you see here of the front patio areas be no more than four feet in height. So this would create a open patio area. There are four floor plans with three architectural styles for each plan, and they are listed here, Spanish, Adobe Ranch, and Tuscan. Now on to the conditions of approval. Kanika Kit will discuss conditions staff has proposed for the. Kanika Kit will discuss conditions staff has proposed for the project.
Thank you, Melinda. Good evening, Commissioner. So, Melinda talked about some of the elevation for the detached home, and up here are some elevation of the detached homes that staff felt need some improvement. And a condition is included in the conditions of approval that's in your packet this evening, that staff will work with the applicant during the permit process to enhance some of these elevation. And particularly, there are some elevation for the rear and the side elevation that may need enhancement, depending on if the side or the rear front a public area. Here's another view of the site plan. So, Melinda pointed out, this is going to be the main entrance for the development, and this one will be an exit-only. What's also along back here is an emergency exit for the development. And, that exit is mainly emergency exit, no pedestrian access at all. So that way, people living in this development would not be able to walk into the enclave development. This is a condition that was carried on from the county. There are several conditions for this project. A lot of them are mitigation measures from the EIR that was prepared for the project. And there are some new conditions that staff added. But this one wall, this one condition that I would like to point out to the Commission is that the wall that you will see along Sisman is going to be taller than six feet, that's allowed in our zoning code. And that's because it's going to be a noise barrier wall. So, when built, it's going to be around maybe eight to nine feet tall. And that is allowed in our code, because it's a sound barrier wall. Another condition that we discussed quite a bit in our staff report is the landscaping around the former Mayor Ike Bootsma home. This is his home, and the development will be developed around there. There are existing trees along, around this property boundary that the applicant is proposing to keep along the south property boundary there. A condition has been included to require the applicant to install permanent irrigation, maintain the trees, and also to provide understory planting, so that that landscape area blends in with the rest of the project. Mr. Ike Bootsma is here this evening also to talk about the trees around his property. He has some concern for the planting along the east side of his property. Pedestrian connection. Okay. For pedestrian connection, this is what the applicant is proposing for pedestrian connection, that's outlined here in blue, three of them, five. And what staff included in our staff report was asking the applicant to provide more pedestrian connection to enhance, to provide enhanced pavement on the road to define the crosswalk. And the area outlined red are those crosswalks that's being recommended. In discussion with the applicant this week, staff have worked out with the applicant to eliminate some of them, so that the crosswalk would not impact parking. Typically, a development of this type, parking is a high demand. And the more crosswalk that we put in, there will be less parking. So, staff this evening is requesting the planning commission to revise the condition to reduce the number of crosswalks from 14 to eight, to eight crosswalks. So, here is the crosswalks that the applicant is proposing to include in the final development. The red crosswalk here, and the red as outlined here. Ten. Actually, staff is recommending to remove this crosswalk, because we don't see the need to have three crosswalks in one intersection. The project was analyzed, and it complies with the former EIR that was certified for the project by the county. Public notices were sent out to property owners within 600 feet. Staff recommends that the planning commission approve the project subject to conditions of approval and amended condition as requested by staff for the pedestrian crosswalk. Here are the options for the commission. The commission can approve the project with additional condition or changes, continue the public hearing, and direct the applicant to make revision or deny the project. The applicant and Mr. Ike Bootsma is here this evening to talk about the project. This concludes staff presentation.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for staff at this time?
So, just to clarify, Kanika, so, how many crosswalks are we talking about at the end?
Nine?
Nine?
Minus that one.
Yeah, whatever's on the exhibit here, minus one.
And then the shipment would be decorative pavers, right, for those crosswalks?
Pardon me?
It would be decorative pavers for those?
Yes. Yes, and that's part of the reasoning for them, is to make it look more attractive.
For staff, why would you allow the crosswalks on one corner, but not on the other? I don't know why we would recommend not having it there, because those people on the south side, if we take that out, they've got to go, I mean, and that's the main thoroughfare to go around for the egress on the most northern side. So, why would you not have it there?
So, we're talking about this three crosswalk here?
Right.
So, we'll keep these two and remove this one here.
Oh, okay. Thank you. I thought it was the other red one you were taking out. Okay, that's what I thought you pointed to. Okay, we're good.
No questions?
I do have one. What's, nowhere, did I miss it, the price point?
Maybe the applicant can talk about the price point for the project?
Yeah, I mean, are these going for 150 or 750?
That information was not shared with staff.
Okay, I'll ask the applicant, thank you.
No further questions from the Commission? I'm going to open the public hearing. Public hearing is now open. The applicant can come up and speak right now? Do we have the applicant here? Is the applicant here?
Denise?
You're here? So, you don't have a presentation for the Commission, so? Well, then, this is the time for you to come up right now. We can bring you back up later if you need to answer any questions.
I'm Denise Shandons, from our place in California. This is a new community for us. It's a beautiful community. Ask for a price point. The only thing I'm mistaken is I don't have a representation in California, and therefore cannot quote pricing. We will be charging more than marketable fair. I will tell you that this is, our target audience for this is young families. It's an entry-level community. Certainly won't be 100,000, but it certainly won't be 700,000 either. It's an entry-level community, and maybe Eastvale, your entry level's a little expensive. But it's not going to be million-dollar homes, by any stretch. We are proposing to have all the mailboxes located in the central unit, in the recreational center. So, there is a pullout provided there for that. You know, they tell you, you're part of the community, you're part of the... I will tell you that the landscaping on the east side, I, I was putting up to Melinda to do a concern with her. That landscaping is not there on the front row. And two, your garage is, I'm sorry, the garage is right there, his garage, which is an RV garage. So, you're looking at the second-floor windows of those units, those three units right there that might be a concern, will be blocked by this garage.
Can we get a pointer or something?
At the bottom.
Okay, right there.
But if you go to page 17 of your packet, you'll see the layout of Mr. Bootsma's property, and you'll see that his garage is right there. And that's great. You would have to stand on the roof of those units to see over his garage to his pool area. So, I don't think that's actually too much of a concern. If we find during construction that that's different, I'm more than happy to work with that to make that, make that okay. Do you have any answering questions you might?
Thank you. Mr. Bootsma, would you like to get up and speak right now?
Please. My only concern is, you know, I know we can work on the east side of the garage. There's a space from the south wall to the end of the garage, and there are already trees are there. I just want to make sure those are not moved. That's the only thing that's blocking that part of the garage.
Address the, could you please address the Commission? Ike, Ike, you address the Commission, please, not...
We have trees on that side here, on the west side also. And I want to make sure those trees don't get removed, because when we plant the trees in 2007, it's hard to contract for us to plant trees all the way around the backyard and give a chance to grow before the house was built. And so, I know there's some, one of the big bushes that one had died, and it's an older spot, so we need to replace that. But I'm sure I can work with the builder, and it's not going to be a problem. I know this is all in the contract, and I know how important it is. I found out how important it is to have everything down in writing, you know, account for those changes, and to see the shit, pick their own criteria. So, I want to make sure upfront that everybody goes into contract, in writing, and, you know, agree, and, you know, ask to be done.
That's between you and the developer, right? That's between you and the developer, right? Okay, thank you. Do we have any other cards speaking on this issue?
No, sir.
Do you want to speak on this issue? All right, go ahead, bring your card to the... And please, just for the record, and for us, give us your name and address. Eastvale?
Yes. Yeah, on my, on the back, where the wall is. We are leading this to say that there's an emergency exit here.
Okay. You address the Commission, please. Go ahead, just make your comments, and we will answer you later. I see, okay.
So, I need to know, we're doing a tear, a tear of the wall down, and then, you know, we're to get some air. Because if you do that, that's coming over into the, out here.
Okay, that's a very good question, thank you. Are you done?
So, we're talking 443, pardon me?
Ma'am, you need to, you need to address the Commission.
And that's going to be having a private area for 243, you know, that area. Also, I'm concerned about the units there, because how high are they? We don't have a lot, you know, scenery. And I'm concerned about the noise area, because the noise, the noise will come right there in the alley, on the back. There are going to be kind of meetings, if there are younger people, there's going to be noise, um, tired, so, this is definitely not going to happen, that's all. And now that you mentioned the emergency exit, I'm really concerned about it.
Okay, thank you.
And I probably have some more.
Thank you. Are there any other cards?
No, sir.
Okay, at this time, then, we will close the public hearings. Do you have any questions or comments?
Mr. Rusher? I have a question for staff. I forgot to ask. Joe, is the access point that we have, they're kind of close to each other, and then you add on to that Mr. Bootsma's house access points? Are we okay with the three access points in such a short distance?
The access point to, the main access point is going to be aligned with Gypsum Creek.
Okay.
And the other access, there's going to be full access, Commissioner Lee, and the other access can be right-in, right-out only.
Okay. And then we have Mr. Bootsma's access point there as well, right next to it. So, we're okay with that?
Yes, yes, sir.
And then, another question for Joe is, do we have any elements in there to kind of reduce the speed around the community? Because I didn't see any. You know, in these type of community, I used to live in one in, you know, Hills, the speed is always the issue, especially with a lot of children at play around that neighborhood. You know, parents constantly, at least where I used to live, parents actually had to put like those children at play, little mannequins, all the time to reduce the speed down in the community. So, I was just wondering if you have anything, if they have anything in there to reduce, kind of reduce the speed down a bit.
Yeah, this is a private community, Commissioner Jocely, and we don't have any requests, and then usually, we don't regulate whether they're going to put the speed up or not interior. But it is, we have a lot of crosswalks in there, you can see, and it's all marked with decorative pavement, and we're hoping that this is going to be deterrent for any speeding. And also, it's a gated community, so people have to stop at the gate and get through the gate and speed up again from there, so...
Okay, I mean, it, yeah, I'm just going to leave it up to the expert of the staff, so, okay.
No further questions?
Nope.
Do we have any other questions? Mush Bata?
For staff, I know the county approved this project eons ago. So, this is under major development review? What are the elements that are requiring it?
Well, major development review is your opportunity to look at the design of the project, so the architecture, colors, materials, the layout of the project, the landscaping, the amenities. All that is part of your review of the major development review.
Okay, so the zoning, the same density, same everything as what was originally approved?
None of that is changing. What happened was their county approval expired. And this is frankly, a very different project. I think it's a better project than the one that the county had approved.
So, how does this project fit within, assuming the state of California still has our affordable housing numbers? And of course, well, I'll let you answer that first.
Yeah, well, not knowing what the price point is, it's unfortunately not dense enough to help us with the most difficult part, which is the 22 acre and above. So, Nexus Town Homes gave us 220 units to meet that number, and that's the hardest one for us. So, this is a good project, it's more variety in the housing types here. I think we're seeing generally, this kind of project doing very well in Eastvale, when they come online. So, it helps us from that standpoint, but in terms of meeting the most difficult housing number we have from the state, this doesn't help us, it's not dense enough.
And what about our position of having senior housing? Since these are all two-story, is that something staff looked at for any of these to be modified in some fashion for a one-story?
Well, perhaps Ms. Williams can address that question. No, we didn't look at that. We don't have a requirement for senior housing. That's something that's obviously desired, but we don't have a specific requirement. We don't have a policy that requires that kind of unit.
Commissioner Jocely?
No, I really didn't have any questions. It's very similar to the project that we're doing on Limonite and Harrison. We're going to have houses that are built similar to this, where they're attached homes. But we're doing it, instead of five and six, we're doing six and eight.
Yeah.
So, it's very similar, and it's a good project, so, I like it. The only concern I had is making sure that what Mr. Bootsma said, and we need to make sure we get, you didn't state your name and where you live at to get it in the records, just because we know you. You got to be fair, okay? But the reality is, you know, if he's worried about it being in writing, some, you know, between himself and Lennar, we need to figure out, with your guys' help, where do we need to get that in writing, to make sure that they're working in cooperation together, so that he's satisfied with tree placement? That's my only concern.
Okay. Let's see, I have a question, that emergency exit on the south end, I'm assuming that's going to come off of Orinda, right? that's going to come off of Orinda, right? So it's just going to continue on through right there. So ma'am, did you hear that?
Yes.
Orinda. You know where that's at?
Uh, I don't know.
Okay, that's where it's going to come. The street, your road's already there. They'll knock down that wall that's there, if there's a wall there, and continue on through. There's no property there, it's just the road.
But Mr. Vice Chair, if I could, just once again, that's an emergency access only, no vehicle access, no pedestrian access. So you will not be able to walk from this community into the enclave.
Right, it's only in case of emergency.
It's only for, emergency vehicles, right. And it actually would work in both directions. If there's an emergency in the enclave and they need another way to get out, they can go out through this project out to Schleswig.
All right, um, I have any further questions?
Question?
Oh, no question, I just have one, kudos to staff.
So final comments then? No final comments? Commissioner Lee?
Yeah, final comment, kudos to staff for addressing the pedestrian elements in the project. So, you know, I didn't have to bring it up this, this time.
Any final comments? Commissioner Patel, Commissioner Charleston?
None.
I have none either. Do we have a motion?
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve.
Go ahead.
Staff recommendation.
Repeat that motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve staff recommendation, including all those crosswalks that staff has conditioned in there.
And communication with Mr. Bootsma.
And, and communication with Mr. Bootsma.
Second.
We have first and a second. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Charleston?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Patel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Oblea?
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. I'm sorry, four zero.
Congratulations. Can someone get Chairman Fain to come back in? Please?
It's a little easier to watch the master.
We are now on item six point four.
Okay. Okay. So item, moving on to item six point four, project number PLN one eight dash two zero zero two nine for Goodman Commerce Center, specific plan amendment for chapter two land use and chapter four signs. Eric, presentation?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. So chair members of the commission, I'll, I'll give a staff report on this. This is a proposed amendment to the Goodman Commerce Center specific plan. This is one of several now that we've done since the adoption of that plan. As we continue to come across issues that just need to get addressed to help the plan better deal with the realities of what's getting built out there. So as you mentioned, there are two different items here. One is in chapter two, and that's, we'll talk a little bit more about that actually. There's another agenda item right after this that relies on this amendment, but that would allow car rentals in the business park portion of the project, which is currently not allowed. And then the other part is to amend chapter four, and that expands the standards for signs to better deal with the retail land use area. When the plan was originally done, it was, the focus was really on the light industrial section and the specific plan just looked to the zoning code for all other sign standards. And as it's turned out, that's not really the way we wanted to go. So this amendment addresses the retail. It also does a much better job of addressing the project-wide identification signage, which we'll talk about in a minute. And I'll note that we've worked very closely with the applicant on this. Your in-house staff actually put this chapter together, worked with the applicant, worked with their architect, so it's been a very collaborative process. So we're very comfortable with what's in here because frankly, we've helped write most of it, so. So by way of background, as I mentioned, chapter two is, the amendment to allow rental car in the business park is in reaction to the desire by one of the existing users out there, Platinum Collision Repair, to add rental car services as an adjunct to their repairs. So you get your car fixed at Platinum, they would like to have a rental car business in their enterprise to rent cars to their patrons. And then chapter four, I think we've already talked about that. So this, if you look at the very bottom of the screen here, is, this is the entire change to chapter two. So currently, the first lineup is what's in the plan. So vehicle, boat, vehicle, boat leasing and rental is conditionally permitted in both the retail and the industrial areas, prohibited in the business park. So this now would allow vehicle rentals, and just for consistency, we left it as a conditional use in both the retail and industrial, and added it as a conditional use in the business park. So that's the entire change in that chapter. So chapter four, some basic points. There's a lot of new stuff in there, but the basic points here are, we really tried to simplify and streamline what's in there. We actually spent, I think Ward will tell you, we spent a lot of time just whittling away at unnecessary words to get down to a concise, easy-to-follow set of regulations. As I mentioned, it better deals with signs in the retail area, does a number of different things. It addresses a lot of issues that aren't really addressed, addressed well or addressed at all in the zoning code. For instance, how much of a window, how much of a retail storefront window can you cover with stuff, with signage? And what is a sign, how to measure signs, et cetera. There's a sign location plan in here now, which identifies the project identification signs. And one thing that the chapter does now is it splits apart what we're calling the estate signs, which are the signs that Goodman will put up, the big monument signs, the freeway signs that you already see out there. Splits those apart from the signs that will be there for individual users like Costco, In-N-Out, and so on. So this is a sign location map, and again, this just highlights the signs that Goodman will be putting up. So some of those are already, already up. This is the kinetic sign along the freeway, that's that big fence-like sign that says Goodman on it. This is that big freeway oriented monument sign that says the station on it. And then these are all the additional signs that they will be putting up. So the estate signs, there's several different kinds. There's corner project monument signs, there's two different types of those. This is at the retail corner up at Cantugalliano and Hamner. This is down in the business park at Belgrave. And actually, you see on here, well, you see on, you see on here are City of Eastvale entry signs. So those aren't part of the sign program because those are our signs, they're in our entryway sign program. So you're seeing, then switching over to the entry monument signs, there are several different kinds of those. There are primary monument signs that go up to forty feet in height. There are secondary signs, two different kinds of those. One that has a sign and then three additional obelisks here, just as kind of an architectural feature. These are all higher, at least the, aside from the obelisks, the monument signs are taller than you could build under the zoning code in the rest of Eastvale, but it seems appropriate given the scale of the project. It's a very, you know, two hundred acre project. It seemed appropriate to allow larger signage. It also gets a lot, there's a lot of detail, as I mentioned, in the retail tenant signage. There are standards for some kinds of signs that we don't have in other places in Eastvale. Some of these blade signs, signs on canopies, plaques on walls. As I mentioned, there's a couple of different standards, whether you're in the business park or in the retail area, about how much of that window area you can cover with signage. And this is all stuff that we've spent a lot of time talking about with the applicant. See, Ward's smiling over there. We've had a lot of conversations about this, but we're comfortable with all the regulations that are in there. There are some additional guidance in here, which we don't have in our current sign program or sign, sign codes about how to measure signs, just so everybody's clear on those issues. You know, how do you measure the height, the width, the area of signs, and so on. So staff's recommendation is to recommend approval of these changes to the city council because this was, is a specific plan and adopted by ordinance. This will go to the city council for a final decision, but we'd be obviously happy to answer any specific questions you have, but our recommendation is for approval. And with that, I will end my presentation. Do you do have the applicant here? Do you have any questions for him?
Okay, thank you. And open public comment for the applicant and their presentation, or do they have any?
Good evening. Good evening, commissioners. Mr. Fain, congratulations on your nomination as the chairperson.
Oh, thank you. I don't know why, but they did.
First of all, I didn't hear you say the name, so this is my first.
Thank you.
Actually, I did not have any remarks for this evening, but I would like to shout out Eric and staff. It's been a long process and I don't think I had a whole appreciation of some of the challenges that the staff faces with the tenants coming in and want to sign and be finished in terms of the regulations side of it. We really, quite frankly, did do a outstanding job on the specific plan and the regulations side of it. And on the retail side, we really have the opportunity to develop. And what I will say is I'm really excited about the specific plan and the signage opportunities. It is temporary, it's exciting, and I think it's a magnificent addition to the project.
Thank you. Any questions for the, for the, Commissioner Patel?
Yes, I don't know if this is for applicant or for staff, which might help us move quickly on chapter two. So it's my under, so I guess Platinum Collision is the one seeking the CUP, is that correct? Versus Goodman?
Uh, yeah, that application came in from Platinum.
Okay, so, um, I guess I'm looking for clarification. We had an issue with another tenant and property owner back around Snapware. And before we as government even get involved, to me, whether Platinum wants a sign or wants this use and the landlord does or doesn't, I don't think that's a governmental issue, that's a private sector issue. Just like with the Snapware, how the tenant didn't want what the landowner was doing, and we basically said, that's a private sector issue, you guys figure it out. So I just want to clarify, is, do we have both the property owner and the tenant seeking or in agreement to the changes for chapter two?
Well, Mr. Chair, I think we're going to get more into that discussion with the next item. So what I might suggest, if Commissioner Patel wants to, you could make a recommendation on chapter four, table this one until after the conclusion of the next item and then come back to this.
Are, are we okay with that?
Because they are connected together and I think the next item would help.
Yeah, is there a motion to do so, or?
Do we need a motion, or? I'd like to make a motion that we focus on chapter four of this specific plan amendment and table the chapter two discussion for the next item six point five.
Second.
Roll call?
Commissioner Charleston?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Patel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Oblea?
Aye.
Chair Fain?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Is there any public comments on, on this item?
No, sir.
Okay. Then I will close public hearing for this item and open up commission discussions if there's any. Commissioner Lee? Good. Okay. Well, then I'll entertain a motion to approve project number PLN one eight dash two zero zero, um, two nine.
Mr. Chair, could I interrupt for one second? Could the maker of the motion give us some latitude to fix some typos and do minor errors in the chapter before it goes to council? There's a few issues with nomenclature signs that we're still nailing down. No changes, just making sure everything reads the same all the way through.
I'll make a motion to approve the replacement of chapter four signs with the new standards, including fixing some of the language.
Minor typographical.
Minor typer, typos.
I'll second.
Roll call?
Commissioner Charleston?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Patel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Oblea?
Aye.
Chair Fain?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
A little break for Commissioner Lee there, but, yeah, should we, do we need a, like a two, three-minute recess, five minutes for bathroom breaks or whatnot? So, all right, so we'll break for five minutes, we'll, we'll come back and reopen the meeting. Okay, let's get ready to start. And if everybody will take their seats. Yeah, it's dry, too. Okay. Alrighty, so I'll call this meeting back to order at, what is that, seven fifty-five? And moving on to project, well, item number six point five, project number PLN one eight dash two zero zero one six, a conditional use permit for enterprise car rentals at Platinum Collision Center. Eric?
Well, I'm confused. I have a question. Do, are we going to talk about six point four, chapter two consecutively with this?
It would be.
How can we approve them if, if it's not even approved in the specific plan?
Well, there is.
Or disapprove?
Mr. Chair, there is a condition, there's a condition on this project that the approval is only valid if and when the specific plan is amended to allow it. So the intent, I think, is that we address this issue and then go back to chapter two and make a recommendation on that.
Makes sense?
So, sorry if that's a little confusing. So for tonight's presentation, I'd like to introduce one of the folks who has been working very hard in the background, one of our planning minions, Peter Miniger, is here in person tonight to make his first presentation to the Eastvale Planning Commission. And so we welcome Peter here. And Peter, go ahead and take it away.
Welcome.
Welcome.
All right. Thank you, Eric. Mr. Chair and Commission, the project before you tonight, as you're aware, is a, can, oh, really hold your applause, I just flipped around, but, oh, there we go. All right. Is a conditional use permit for the operation of an enterprise car rental facility inside the existing Platinum Collision Center at the Goodman Commerce Center Business Park. So the project is located at the northwestern corner of Hamner Avenue and Belgrave Avenue in the existing Platinum Collision Building. There we go. So the proposed rental car operation would be inside the existing building. It would be approximately five hundred square feet and it would be contained inside the existing Platinum Collision Repair Building. The proposed operation of the project, the rental car operation would operate during the standard Platinum Collision Center business hours and serve Platinum Collision Center customers. They would be allowed a maximum of ten cars, which would be parked behind the building separate from customer parking, so it wouldn't impact their parking capacity for, for customers. As you're aware, the current specific plan does not allow vehicle rental uses in the business park land use area. So the proposed specific plan amendment that you're considering tonight separately from this item would allow the car rental facility to operate within the business park land use with a conditional use permit. And then a quick summary of some key conditions of approval. The project requires the approval of the specific plan amendment prior to the operation of the car rental facility. The project requires the approval of the specific plan amendment prior to the operation of the car rental facility. And then also, as noted previously, the vehicle parking would need to be outside of the customer parking area with a maximum of 10 rental cars on site. And then there's been some revisions from the applicant that I'm going to let Kanika discuss.
Thank you, Peter. So, staff had a discussion with the owner of Platinum on Friday, and his request is to modify condition number eight to allow the car rent, to allow Enterprise to service all Platinum customers. So, Platinum have three other locations other than Eastville, and the condition that's written only allow them to provide rental to Eastville customer only, but they're asking to revise that condition, so it covers all Platinum business, no matter where they're located at. And I was also requesting to remove condition number nine. Condition number nine prohibits Enterprise from putting the sign on the building or advertising Enterprise business at this location. These conditions were put in, or condition number nine was put in because it was staff understanding that the business operation was only going to service Enterprise customers, so staff didn't see the need to advertise Enterprise. Staff did have a discussion about this condition with Goodman. Oh, sorry, only to service Platinum customers. Thank you, Brian. So, that's why that condition number nine was put in. Staff did have this discussion with Platinum and Goodman, and Goodman is also in agreement with applicant's request. The proposed CUP is exempt from CECL because it's an existing facility, it'll be operating in an existing facility. Notices were sent out to property owners within 600 foot of the radius from the property boundary, and no comments have been received at this time. Staff recommends that the planning commission recommend approval of the project subject to conditions of approval. As Peter mentioned, there is a condition in there that this conditional use permit doesn't become, doesn't get in effect unless the specific plan amendment is approved to allow car rental in the business park. The applicant, Goodman, and a representative from Platinum and Enterprise are all here this evening to answer any question from the commission. This concludes staff presentation.
Thank you, Kanika. And I'll be opening a public hearing here, and does the applicant have a presentation for us?
I was just wanting to address Commissioner Patel, a question from the previous agenda item. And the genesis of this was, I received a phone call from the owner of Platinum Collision. He said, "Or, I have a request for you," and that is that you would allow us to essentially put an office in our building to service our customers. When people are dropping off cars, there is no convenient rental car facility in Eastville. We'd like to go to have Enterprise partner with us and provide cars for our customers. So, I don't have a problem with that. Let me talk to the city and see what needs to be on board. We talked about it, and determined that we can't allow use in the specific plan, so that was the genesis of the specific plan amendment. And then, when the applicant, then Platinum made their request, there were a number of issues that came up about the operation, hence the conditions of approval. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to the applicant and then the connection with the specific commission. But for us as the owner, our concern was that the business park did not provide location for car rental facilities. So, that was for us, it's important to look at the number of cars and make sure that the cars were stored in the enclosed yard of finding or this across from the parking lot in the business park.
Thank you.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Rory with President Dyer. I do want to kind of address a couple things, um, as, was, what was addressed? That there is no convenient rental car company here in Eastville. Working with Platinum Collision and their customers, it's beneficial for their customers. It also helps them with the insurance among customers and basically the community around them. What I was saying back there, I did see on the PTA perps, which right on the wall back from the bathroom, it does have Enterprise listed on it. So, if a customer or a PTA member calls up and they need a rental car at the moment, they have to go to Norco, they have to go to Corona, they have to go Riverside, they have to go to Ontario. That's, that's a couple of issues for the city of Eastville and IC. That's tax revenue that is going out. It's also gas company. Customers have to pull their cars back up, and when they don't, you pull it back up as well. So, I guess, you know, and I hope this is the right place to do it, it's addressing the Platinum customers only. Enterprise is a service company, and we get phone calls from neighborhoods and customers who their car broke down and they can't afford it. It may not be a body shop collision situation, it may affect tires in that battery, and they can't wait for sure. Well, as it's written right now, we can't go to service those customers. We have to tell them no. We have to tell them that they have to call the anchor location in Norco, which is probably the closest to this area, or they have to call Ontario. So, I do hope that we take that into consideration and open up to residential customers as well. Thank you.
Is there a Platinum applicant or representative that wants to speak to us, or?
Good evening. My name is Jan Baker, and I'm a representative of Platinum Collision Centers. I didn't really have anything prepared tonight, but I wanted to represent Platinum, and I can hopefully ask any questions, but you guys help.
Thank you. And is there any public comment for this item?
No, sir.
Okay. So, this time I'll close public hearing and open up commission discussion. Commissioner Lee?
So, just out of curiosity, this is for both applicant or staff. Why was it initially limited to just Platinum customers? Why can't it be a public thing and have all of our residents be served by Enterprise?
Well, if you go back to when the specific plan was originally approved and the land use table was put together, the intent at that time, and it was the desire of Goodman, was not to have vehicle rentals in the business park area. So, Platinum came along, and we thought, well, this limited kind of car rental for their customers only wasn't kind of breaking that rule, that a big car rental place would still have to go into the retail area, but if you just want to have a car rental for your customers, that was okay. So, that was the reasoning behind this. So, and that's still, I think, one of the questions in front of the commission is how to enforce that limitation, so it doesn't become the kind of larger car rental facility that hasn't been desired there and that I don't think Goodman desires to have in the business park. That's where the conditions that are in there came from, as you know, that the applicant is asking to take some of those off, but that's where we came up with conditions like no signage on the building, don't advertise it. So, that if you're driving by and you're not a Platinum customer, you need a rental car, you're not going to pull in there because it's not for the public, it's just for Platinum customers. So, that, that's kind of the genesis of our discussion.
So, we also do have a condition in there to only allow the rental vehicles to be stored in the yard, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, in my personal opinion, I guess that would kind of prevent them from growing in size, but I don't know. To me, you know, yeah, again, I'll reserve my comments at the end, but.
Commissioner Patel?
Yeah, probably because I've been around a while on the whole private sector thing. Great idea, love the service, but I'm looking from a structure. So, is Enterprise going to be subleasing this from Platinum? Or is it going to be a separate entity as far as who's responsible of the operations and?
Uh, yes, ma'am, we will sublease from Platinum.
From Platinum, okay. So, then I guess, question for Platinum. You know, great service for your customers, absolutely, but it's a business park. And staff and my fellow commissioners know, business park is for business park, light industrial, it's not retail. So, my question is, are all, I know I go to Norco, and I know there's Corona, and so you're saying the other ones are in Ontario and Riverside?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, um, that's Enterprise. Platinum is only in Corona and here.
We have three locations.
Where's the third?
We have two in Corona, one in Eastville, and then assume we'll be a fourth in those one.
Okay. So, are each of those Platinum locations separate corporations? Or is it part of the overall structure of Platinum as a whole? My question being is, your request is to have non-Eastville residents have access to your service. So, I'm trying to ascertain the size, you know, is the Eastville location a tenth? Is it 50%? I mean, what's the breakdown of, you know, are we going to now have 100 customers from Corona that are going to be coming here versus, you know, three or four? That's what I'm trying to figure out.
Commissioner Patel?
Yes.
I, I think what, if they had an Ontario resident across the street from Goodman wanting to get their car serviced, it would limit it only to Eastville residents, and so somebody right across the street in Ontario couldn't get their car serviced here.
Yeah, no, I'm not talking about that.
But that's what the condition, that's why they were wanting to remove the only Eastville residents.
Yes, but if this is outside of just Platinum and now Enterprise, which I would love for Enterprise to have a location, but that's called retail, that's not in a business park. So, whether Goodman could find overall in the retail side of the world, then I would say, hey, let's get Enterprise in Eastville. But, you know, are we going to now have, you know, maybe Corona is busy or whatever, but now Platinum is going to have their own little running boy to go back and forth, or Enterprise? Are we creating too much traffic in a business park, which really is meant for retail? And that's why I'm trying to figure out if the revenue from the different stores, are they separate or are they all together? Because that's going to be a business strategy if, if they're all one. Versus if they're separate, then that issue doesn't bother me as much. And maybe I should state, for those of you who don't know, I deal with businesses on the business side. I'm not a governmental person, employee, so that's.
Okay, the, as far as financials, Platinum Collision Center is one whole.
Okay.
So, all is considered one, so all three are in, combined as one.
Okay, so you have one financial statement, so we're just trying to get whatever revenue and service our customers under one corporate entity?
Correct.
Okay, so, that then concerns me because as Platinum grows, and that's great, but if your Corona locations can't absorb that, that business, now all of a sudden, we have a much higher retail enterprise business, good for Platinum, but not in a business park. And, and so that's my concern, and so wanting to have eight and nine being modified, um, not a business park. That's, that's, you know, retail, I don't know a word if there's some other place within Goodman or some other place in the city. I would welcome Enterprise wholeheartedly. Love the service, love the creativity that you want to offer this for your clients, but I would be okay, but it would be limiting to 10 cars. I know what Norco's got, I know the traffic, been there, I've had my, you know, um, but it's a business park. And I'm okay with limitations, but I, anyway, okay. I think I have my questions.
It's closed, but did you want, did you have a comment to, or response to Commissioner's question? Did you have a direct answer to Commissioner Patel's question, or?
Indirect.
Indirect, okay, I mean, we'll move on until they answer. Commissioner Charleston?
Okay, I hear what Commissioner Patel's saying, but for me, this is pretty simple. We have a auto body shop that needs to be able to give somebody a car that, when their car breaks down. And I'm not worried about who's coming from Corona. If they, if they work on Lamborghinis and it's at the Eastville site, then good for us. And they're still going to, you know, they're probably not going to rent a car anyway if they own a Lamborghini. They're going to drive one of their other five cars. So, the reality is, if we only have so much room in the back to park cars, because that was my only concern. Originally, when the first CUP came forward, we were very clear about that there would not be cars outside. You would not even know it was a body shop. And I've been to the body shop for grand openings and chamber events, and it's magnificent. So, the fact that if you've got room in the back, that these cars are going to be parked, and there's only going to be 10 cars, and you can't park anymore any, anyplace else, I don't, I think this is a non-issue. I think it's a good move to let them have Enterprise at that location.
Vice Chair?
Question. Where's the closest car rental other than Enterprise? Are there any other car rentals in the neighborhood?
No, there is just the Enterprise in Norco and the one in Ontario, and then after that it turns, but it's not in Eastville. It's on U.K.
So, there, there are no other nearby rentals?
No.
Okay. That, to condition number eight, I think that should stay in because it doesn't say it has to service Eastville residents. It says, uh, center, Platinum customers of the Eastville location. So, if somebody from Corona comes and gets their car repaired there, they're going to get to be able to rent a car. So, it should stay in there, I guess. And number nine, if, we're trying to limit that, the use or the size of that rental, because it's a business park, it's not retail, we need to leave condition nine in there, no advertising. Maybe they could advertise on a flyer or something that they could easy access to Enterprise rental cars at this location. But if Enterprise wants to increase their customer size or volume, they, maybe they could rent or build their own rental facility in Goodman Commerce Center, because I know there's still plenty of room there for, for more businesses to go in. So, I'm sure they'd be more than willing to talk to you about that. But it's a business park, so it needs to stay small, and it's a good idea, I think, because they need some convenience. There's no rental cars areas in the, in the immediate area, so to limit it to 10 cars, and it's just a convenience for the customer, that's all that it's all about, and I'm fine with that. But going any larger than that, because once you open that can of worms, boy, it's going to grow. So, let's keep it small. That's my comment.
So, just to get this straight, 10 cars limited, I'm, yeah, I'm okay with condition eight, you know, as is presented. I'm not okay with condition nine being crossed out because I don't see a need for signage advertisement, at least. I mean, I know there may be social media and newspaper benefits to Platinum itself by offering or stating that you give your customers rental car access, but since you're not open- Uh, but since you're not opening it to the public, per se, then there's, shouldn't be a need for signage outside. That states Enterprise. So, that, that, that's my comment there. Any other comments, or?
Mr. Chair?
Um, so, we're considering the use of it. Um, so, again, uh, if we're gonna allow the use to occur, I think it has to be open to public. I don't know why we're just limiting it to just the customers. I think the ten car only already limits the size of the rental place. Um, uh, I would like to use it if I need a rental car. Um, I'm sure a lot of our residents in, in Eastvale would like to use it if it's available. So, again, if it's, I, and, and again, you know, for some reason, I don't know since when we started limiting business from like signage and, um, social media outreach and things like that. I, you know, let, it's a business, let them do it. I, I don't understand this whole limitation on advertising. Um, we, we've never done that for other businesses, so why would we allow the use and not, not for them to advertise? So, I don't understand that part, so I.
Oh, actually, just to be clear a little bit, we're not discussing whether we're opening an Enterprise to the general public or not. The, the, the project is for them to just allow rentals to their Platinum customers, right? So.
Mr. Chair? May I?
Sure.
Uh, the reason being, Commissioner Lee, is that it's a, it's a Business Park. It's not a retail center. So, a rental car service is a retail service. So, we can't allow that retail service in a Business Park.
Oh, that's why we, they're coming up with a specific plan amendment. We allow amendments to occur under circumstances, and this is a good circumstance, in my opinion.
Yeah, and, and a minimal, in a minimal way, not in a full-blown car rental service. It's ten cars.
And see, I, I don't like the part, I, I, I like number nine, the way it is, crossed out. I don't like it where it is no advertising. What if they wanna put a four-inch by sixteen-inch sign? That's just a little ad lib saying, look, if you bring your car here to get fixed, I've got a car for you, so you don't have to worry about a ride home, if you wanna rent a car. I, I think we're making too much out of it.
Right.
If, if, the ten cars is gonna limit the retail aspect of it. They are not gonna be able to service a hundred people with ten cars. And if they, if they are willing to take a car from Norco and bring it to me at, I, I like the public use of it. If they're willing to bring it to Eastvale, so I can get a ride up there and not have to go somewhere else, I, I don't see what the deal is, if they can't have more than ten cars. That's gonna limit everything they can do, is the amount of cars they have.
Will the, sorry, will the sign, um, will the signage be a, a sort of, uh, presented before the commission later on? Or is this just?
Yeah, you, you could require that to come back. Typically, it wouldn't. Signs usually don't come back to the planning commission.
Okay. Well, I, I mean, I'm, I'm just curious why that was put on and then crossed off. Was it something that Goodman had suggested? Or if, if Goodman's okay with putting up the signage, then that, that, that's private decision. And I personally wouldn't get involved in that decision, but.
Well, basically, all of condition nine was our attempt to say in condition form, if you only wanna rent to your Platinum customers, how do we, how do we do that? And one idea that, well, a couple that can, that came to us was, well, if the customers are coming in anyway to Platinum, you don't need to have a sign on the building. Because now, you're advertising through the sign to everybody who drives by on Belgrave. So, someone who's not a Platinum customer, driving by on Belgrave sees Enterprise Car Rental. So, the next time they wanna rent a car, they're gonna drive there. And, what condition eight says is they can only rent to Platinum Collision customers. So, we were in part trying to keep Enterprise and Platinum from having to turn away people unhappy, thinking they can come here and rent a car. 'Cause if they're abiding by condition number eight, someone comes in who's not having their car repaired at Platinum, they would have to say, I can't rent you a car. To which that person says, well, uh, there's a sign on the outside that says Platinum, or it says Enterprise Car Rental. Are you at Enterprise Car Rental Facility? So, we're, we're trying to avoid those conversations for them. Now, if they wanna have unhappy customers coming into their business all the time, thinking that they can rent cars when they're not Platinum customers, that's kind of up to them. But, we were trying to avoid those, those kinds of discussions. And, put bookends on it that matched what they said they wanted to do. Only rent cars to Platinum customers.
So, initially, condition nine was recommended by staff, it wasn't crossed out?
That was our recommendation, and the strikeout here is basically what the applicant is asking for, is to take those restrictions off and allow them to put signage up and advertise at Enterprise Car Rental Facility.
Okay, Mr. Chair, so, if we strike out number nine, I think we should strike out number eight. If we wanna keep number nine, then we should just keep number eight. I think that's how I, I view it. Um, in my personal opinion, if we're, if we're striking out number nine, we should just strike out number eight, and then just rely on number seven to limit the business as, as a small business.
Mr. Chair? Um, this is a fabulous option for our current business in this city of Platinum Collision. Great opportunity, fix my car, give me a rent, give me a, a rental car. Um, fabulous. And it's for any customer who is Platinum Collision, you're working on my stuff. Commissioner Charleston said, yes, we're limiting it to ten. I see this more as a downfall for Enterprise. Why are they going to, I mean, yeah, they'll get ten cars, but they're trying, I'm believing, to penetrate the Eastvale market, which would be huge. Um, but for Enterprise, and I would love for them to come, but that's their own separate business venture. And, I believe and would love for them to come and find a location. Where's, where's the guy from CBRE? Um, you know, have a broker, find them a location. But, for them to, for Enterprise to come, and hoping they're gonna get all this business, and I think staff is a good thing. The last thing Platinum wants is for someone to come in saying, hey, I wanna rent a car, and it's for their customers, who, where they're making their profit margin on the collision. Um, so, I think nine is contradicting what Platinum is trying to do for their customers. And I'm all for Platinum having this for any of their customers who are coming, and they have ten rental cars. Down in Norco, Hamner, um, there's easily thirty to forty cars there in the front part of the parking lot, I think, when I've been there. Um, but it's, I, I think we have contradicting opportunities. Of course, Enterprise wants to be able to publicize on social media and newspaper and everything else, but that's not what Platinum is trying to do. They're limit, they're limited to only ten cars. If there was a spot where they could have forty and fifty, and Platinum within the retail and, or down the street or something, I mean, I was, unfortunately, I was at a competitor getting my truck fist fixed, and Enterprise came to pick me up down the street. It was fabulous. But, I, I think we're, we're selling, we're not doing justice for Enterprise, and we're doing a disservice for Platinum if there is all that signage. And I think staff made a good point, that you don't want somebody coming into Platinum, and now you have a customer that's mad at you. And, you know, bad news happens faster, travels faster than good news. And, I mean, again, I, I would welcome Enterprise. I'm fine with eight, but I think nine needs to stay in, because this is a Business Park. Any of our other industrial parks in the city, we would not allow a retail business in that area. It's just for safety, the other tenants in the Business Park don't want that sort of traffic. But I think having it concise within Platinum, ten is a good number.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, uh, we have a request from Mr. Mace with Goodman to continue this discussion to the next meeting.
To our next meeting?
I'm fine.
Oh, sure, you guys, so you, is there any objections to that? Is there?
Is Platinum?
Well, sure, you can come up, I mean, if you're making that request, um, yeah. I, I mean, I'll open that for your request. But Commissioner Oblea asked, um, uh, your reasons as to requesting it being continued.
Essentially, um, I think there's been some miscommunication between Platinum themselves and our understanding of the request. And I feel like, frankly, the care and attention I can apply concerning what we have, because the request was to service Platinum customers, but not a request of an Enterprise car rental. We would love an Enterprise car rental in a retail center. So, if Enterprise wants to talk to us about a lease, we're all ears. Having said that, if we can figure out a way to have a car rental service with Platinum to make their business more successful, we support that.
Okay, thank you. Well, is there a motion to continue it, or?
I'll move that we continue this, uh, item till the following meeting.
Second.
Local?
Commissioner Charleston?
Nay.
Commissioner Lee?
Nay.
Commissioner Patel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Oblea?
Aye.
Chair Fang?
Can I make a comment before I vote? I hate tiebreakers. I'm for this, but, um, I agree with Ward that there's too much confusion here. I mean, I, I, I sort of have a clear understanding here, but there's too much confusion. So, this may give you guys a little more time to sort of clear up certain things, so, um, aye.
Motion passes, three, two.
So, Mr. Chair, we'll bring this back at your July meeting.
Thank you.
So, are we going? Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Chair, so, uh, chapter two now is going to be also, um, put on hold until we continue?
So, Eric, do we go back to six point four?
Well, we, let's go back to six point four, uh, and I think it's up to the commission to decide what to do. You've made a recommendation on the chapter four portion of that item. Uh, I'll, I'll let the commission decide what to do with chapter two. But that question is still open, whether you wanna recommend that change, recommend denial, or maybe continue that item as well.
Okay, so.
I'm going to make a motion to, uh, uh, change the Business Park, uh, specific plan to allow, uh, car rentals.
What, what was, I didn't hear that. Could you speak into the microphone more?
I make, I'll make a motion to allow, uh, specific plan amendment to go through, so that the, um, car rentals are allowed in the Business Park.
Second.
Local?
Commissioner Charleston?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Patel?
Nay.
Commissioner, Vice Chair Oblea?
Nay.
Chair Fang?
Aye.
Motion passes, three, three, two.
Moving on to item six point six, uh, project number PLN one eight dash two zero zero one four, um, for a Quick Quack car wash at the Goodman Commerce Center. Presentation, Eric, that's a, that's a cool name, Quick Quack.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, Kenika Kitt, our a- actual planning manager, is here to make this presentation.
Thank you, Eric. Good evening, Commissioner. The project before you this evening is a request for approval of a major development review to build a Quick Quack car wash with twenty-four vacuuming stalls at the Goodman Commerce Center. Here is a project location map showing the location of the Goodman Commerce Center that encompasses the entire area. The area outlined here in red is where Quick Quack is, will be located. Here's a site plan of Quick Quack proposal. Um, Hamner is along here, but there's a building that will be between Hamner and the proposed Quick Quack car wash. Here's the site plan, there's two access point here, and here's a car wash. Here's a car wash facility, and here are the parking for the vacuuming area. And the next few slides, staff will talk about screening and aesthetics. Here's an image of other Quick Quack facility. As you can see, their typical color is green and yellow with a duck logo on the top. That is not the elevation that you're getting this evening at the Goodman Commerce Center. Here are four elevation of what's being proposed. The project has been designed to feature modern contemporary style design that's complement other building in the Goodman Retail Center with flat roof and projecting canopies and gray color tone. Here's north elevation, and it's featured an arch entryway, and the south elevation has a tower element. The east elevation will mainly front faces the Amazon offsite parking. And the west elevation, most of this elevation will be screened from view, because there will be vacuuming area and a metal canopy that will be in front of the west elevation. Here's a rendering showing the west elevation, and that's the metal canopy I was talking about with cars vacuuming. This the west, and that's the north elevation. And as you can see, the duck on this logo here is much smaller than the one we showed earlier. And it doesn't include the green and bright color, yellow. And here's the northeast elevation. So, as I mentioned earlier, these are the parking area, and this is gonna be the main drive aisle for the Goodman Commerce Center as it entered from Hamner. The applicant is proposing to use, um, hedge planting along here to screen the parking area, and also, a wall around the central vacuuming system with landscape to soften the wall. Here's an exhibit showing vehicle and pedestrian access. The green aerial shows vehicle access that can be accessed off Hamner Avenue to the facility. Um, and relates to pedestrian access, because of the type of use, that is a car wash facility where people will mainly be driving their car to a facility, they're not gonna be walking there or really walking anywhere on the site, other than getting out their car to vacuum the car. Staff didn't really require any pedestrian access within this development, this site. Um, staff is working with Goodman to provide some sort of pedestrian connection at a larger level that connects the retail area that's to the north here, um, and connect it across the proposed Quick Quack all the way to the south. Here's an onsite circulation of what could happen. Mainly, we anticipate cars going in here, getting in line to go to use the car wash facility. There are also an access point that if customer changed their mind about car, wanting to wash their car, they can always exit the facility this way. And, the project is within the parameter that was, um, reviewed under the EIR that was prepared for the Goodman Commerce specific plan. So, no further environmental analysis is needed. Notices were sent out to property owners. There's, as you can see, there's not very many property owners rents around Quick Quack or tenants, so we only sent out five notices. Um, most of it is Goodman. Staff recommends that the planning commission approve the project subject to conditions of approval. Here are the options for the commission. The commission can approve the project with additional changes or condition, continue the public hearing and direct changes to the applicant, or deny the project. Staff is available to answer any questions from the commission.
Thank you. We'll open public com, uh, public hearing here for the applicant, um, if they have a presentation or. Thank you.
Chairman, you might, since you were all in attendance at City Manager, Michelle Nissen's going away party last night, uh, you might have seen in the video, Michelle took a picture with the Quick Quack, Quack, uh, uh, duck.
Plaque.
Plaque, uh, uh, at the ICSC conference here in, in Las Vegas. Uh, we were there, uh, working with our development community to recruit businesses, and, and we met with the Quick Quack, uh, business, uh, to, and she took. and, and we met with the Quick Quack, uh, business, uh, to, and she took a picture. She might have seen that picture with their Quick Quack quackle, uh, uh, at, at that, at that last night. So, uh, we, it was, they had a really nice booth at the ICSC, uh, conference in Las Vegas, uh, last month.
Thank you. Is, is that the name of the mascot? All right, is there, thank you. Um, is there any public, uh, comments on this item?
No, sir.
Okay. And, uh, with that, I'll close public hearing and, uh, open up commissioner discussion. Commissioner Lee.
So, just a quick question. Um, this could be applicant or staff. Isn't there a car wash with Costco as well?
Yes, uh, you've already approved a car wash in front of the Costco. They, they plan to build that in the future. They know about this, and, uh, Quick Quack can answer it from their standpoint, but our understanding from Costco is that they feel it's a different type of car wash, different market, and that they can both be there at the same time.
It's a different market? Okay, all right. Explain it to me.
Sure.
Uh, Costco car wash, uh, for the first time, we're, 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 uh, membership, or anybody not just Costco. Uh, so their car wash will be a service there. Our, we have a service there, but everybody else is a standard, uh, preference. Uh, they also do not have pre-mat, uh, uh, we do not have a pre-mat. So, we, we, our intent is to do a little bit more like that, where, you know, there's just, uh, it's not, uh, it's, uh, it's a different, it's a different, it's a different.
Commissioner Patel.
Um, can you?
Sorry. Um, Commissioner, if I could just expand on that. When, when we started negotiating with Costco, we, we had told them that we had planned to do a car wash. They, they, some of the stores have car washes, others don't. And so that there was, there is an agreement, something, uh, with them, uh, that we will build this car wash and they would not do a car wash for three years to their operation. And then after such, on both site plans, if they like to build a car wash, three years, uh, we'll do it.
Thank you.
And, uh, we, we partnered with Costco, uh, to do other applications, similar to this, uh, we got the option to do a car wash.
Could you just give us a little background, um, corporation, how many locations, west coast, national?
So, we're focused primarily in southwest, so we're in, uh, five cities right now. We're, uh, we have, um, like one car, we're in Utah, Texas. And we just opened, uh, we have stores, children, they have children as well. Um, we have a website, so we can also, uh, um, there's five stores. Um, we're growing over the last two and a half years, we're, uh, a couple of sites. So, we're focused on developing in southwest right now. Our operation is, um, so we're not franchise, so we're all corporate.
Okay.
So, we're very consistent with product and training, and all part of the, uh, site. This site goes and we operate the same as any way. Um, we have a membership program, so our customers may, uh, look huge, and they can come watch the parks, but they're just staying one. Uh, that's what a lot of our customers like. Most of our customers, it's about, uh, sixty, I think, percent.
More of the volume discount, um, opportunity, I guess?
Yeah, we're really trying to build, uh, uh, for our customers right now, that's really what we're gonna do, uh, um, on a whole basis, exactly, and, uh, everybody loves an operating second, uh, we've got a huge base that, um, uh, uh, that's, uh, second, uh, uh, and that.
What'll be the closest location, if this gets approved, to Eastville? What, what's the next li-, closest?
Recommendation, staff request the removal of condition number six of the conditions of approval, which states that no permits, building permit, grading permit, et cetera, shall be issued without recordation of the tentative parcel map. This is not applicable to this project, so staff request the removal of that, that one condition. So, staff recommends the approval of the tentative parcel map, subject to the conditions of approval with the one revision, which is the removal of condition number six. Options are, the planning commission can approve the project with additional changes or conditions, continue the public hearing and direct the applicant to make revisions, or deny the tentative parcel. Staff is available to answer any questions, and that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you. Opening public comment, does the applicant have some, oh, I know the applicant has something to say.
First off, I'm a little bit frustrated earlier, and second, you know, this is just a matter of providing on the property at this point, working through the other things, and I just wanted to share, since this is my first opportunity, I know with the council we did something else, but I just want to share what special place this is to do business. I'm one of the owners of campus, which we developed, and another couple of projects are becoming to you in the future, and so it's a special place because it created here, and so for me and my family, we're very grateful for the opportunity to do business here. Staff has been incredible with work throughout the environment of on development projects. There's a reason we gravitated toward taking out some more sites, and so, you know, thank you for the opportunity to do business here.
Thank you. Any public comments for this item?
No, sir.
Okay. Then we'll close public hearing and move on to discussion. Commissioner Lee? Commissioner Patel?
I just have a question for staff, how does this breakdown of the lots differ from when we originally approved this a couple of years ago? When we originally did the campus?
So, we have a site plan here. Here's a site plan showing the original approval of the campus. This front parcel is the one parcel that's in question right now. When this was presented to commission and city council for approval back in two thousand and twelve, I believe, all these industrial, light industrial buildings were proposed to have its own lot, so that they can be individually sold to property owners. There, there were approval for two buildings, and an office building, all three of these were proposed via on one parcel, but now the applicant is proposing the same concept for their light industrial building, but we don't know what the development would be. It's mainly to subdivide this one parcel to four, so that they can either develop it and have someone else own the building and the land, or give it to someone else to develop each of those parcels.
Which could also allow for, for separate owners.
Correct.
Thank you.
Commissioner Charleston?
I'm good.
Vice Chair?
You said we, to omit one of the conditions of approval, what was that one again?
Yes, staff is requesting to remove condition number six, which is the last conditions of approval.
What is it?
The, the condition as written right now requires the applicant to record a tentative parcel map prior to issuance of building permit, but because the request is mainly to subdivide the lot to, for convenience for selling out individual land, no development is being proposed, this condition is not, doesn't apply.
Okay.
Also because under the standard subdivision ordinance, if they were to develop four buildings on there and never record the final map, they will not be able to sell off the individual building to individual property owner until the final powers, parcel map is recorded.
Okay, thank you.
Good question for staff. Is parcel map exempt from CEQA?
Yes, the parcel map qualified for the CEQA exemption for land division.
Okay.
CEQA, the minor land division has a number of requirements, as far as a maximum acreage and a maximum number of parcels that can be subdivided, and this project fell under both of those requirements.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I have no questions, and I'll entertain a motion to approve the project with the removal of condition six, is that the request?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Roll call?
Commissioner Charleston?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Patel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Oblea?
Aye.
Chair Fain?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Cruising along, last item, six point eight. I, I, I heard claps. Project number PLN one eight dash two zero zero two two, conditional use permit for the sale of beer and wine for a biology restaurant. Is there present?
Yes, there is, and it's my pleasure to introduce for the first time anywhere at a planning commission meeting, Myra Salas will make the presentation tonight.
Oh, hi.
And I'll turn it over to her.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Norris, and good evening, Mr. Chair and Commissioners.
Could you speak into the microphone, get it closer to your mouth, yeah?
Yes.
She has it down low.
Thank you, Mr. Norris, and good evening, Chair and Commissioners. The project before you this evening is for a conditional use permit for a biology restaurant to allow the sales of beer and wine, no distilled spirits, for onsite conceptions at new biology restaurant. Biology Restaurant is located at the northeast corner of Limonite and Sumner Avenue, at the existing Eastville Marketplace. The photo before you is a future location of biology restaurant. The floor plan shows an outline of the proposed storage location. Beer is proposed to be served on tap and single bottles. Single bottles of wine will be stored in coolers under the service counter. These are the existing alcohol sales. There's one offsite sale at the Smart and Final, and one onsite, onsite sale at the Burger Room, and this one biology requesting for the onsite sale. This is an illustration showing all the onsite and offsite alcohol sales within the entire city of Eastville. After the, after the police department's review, typical conditions of approval were provided, such as the sale of beer and wine will end one hour prior to the close of the business. Requirements for surveillance, monitoring, employee training, and consumption for boundaries. Based on the findings of approval, biology is consistent with the general plan and zoning code, as well as the airport land use commissions. It has been determined that the use will not be detrimental to the surrounding neighborhoods. Staff recommends that planning commission approve condition, conditional use permit. If the commission does not wish to approve the project, here are other options for the commission. To approve the project with additional changes and conditions, continue the public hearing and direct the applicant to make revisions, or deny the CUP. Staff is prepared to answer any questions for the commission.
Thank you. Open public hearing for the applicant, if they're here for any comments or presentation.
Thank you, Frank Will, biology professor. First of all, I'd like to thank the staff who did the meeting tonight, and who they are, and who they're great, and we really appreciate everything the staff have done to help me. I only keep Maria, we have a lot of units in the Empire, we have one in Westwood, and it's around the freeway. I'm really excited to be in Eastville, I'm from Corona, I've been a resident for thirty-five years, and the growth of Eastville, I'm still looking to see what you've done with it, it's just amazing. Maybe I haven't grown up in Corona, but I'm in it. We think that we'll do really well here, we do well in these type of communities. We have a lot of homes we can offer our restaurant to, it's a fast casual restaurant. We offer it differently than some of our competitors, but here in wine, it's just like, we have to go in a piece. So, we've really got to serve it to be with our competitors, and I think we do a great job in this community, and thank you very much.
Thank you. So, any public comments?
No, sir.
So, I'll close the public hearing and open up for any questions or discussions. Commissioner Patel? We're good, we're breezing through this one.
I have a question, is the patio area going to be gated or enclosed?
Yes, by these rules, it hasn't been gated.
Very good, thank you.
I have one question. Do you have real deep dish, like Chicago?
Fast casual is thirty-five percent. And we'll put all this together in a printed package for you. Kind of worked on getting the presentation of it. We'll put this together in a packaged form so you can take a better look at it. So, breaking down just restaurants, so let's exclude the donut places and the coffee shops. Fast food is a fourth of all the restaurants here and fast casual is forty-seven percent. So, half of our restaurants are not fast food, they're fast casual. And then casual dining is fourteen percent. And then, of course, the other two higher categories don't exist here yet. And here's how that breaks down. So, just the restaurants that are here and, of course, the goose eggs, the ones that aren't on here, are fine dining and premium casual. But, again, about half your restaurants are fast casual.
Eric, can you back up? Why didn't those numbers add up to a hundred percent?
Maybe because I added them up wrong.
Okay.
We'll fix that in the printed version.
Okay.
Eric, before, um, I would be curious in whatever presentation to try to include what we've got going on with the Lille property because we have that whole separate restaurant. What did we call it?
We called it Victoria Gardens.
No, it's Victoria Gardens Beyond.
That's what we're looking for.
But remember, we, part of that whole, that plan was no, no fast food, no chain. It was all boutique type of stuff. Is there somehow that you could, or is it, or it can't really be done because there's no development yet? But I think including that somehow.
I think it's a good, it's a good point. We can talk about that.
To at least include so we know big picture.
Yeah.
What we're thinking we're gonna have in our higher-end Victoria Gardens Lille.
Well, if you go back to, say, premium casual, being mostly in like a shopping district, that then is where we'll build a shopping district and that's where you'll see the best chance for the higher-end restaurants. And there is a requirement built into that plan that any restaurant has to come here for a review of that, of any kind of food place, including coffee, to make sure it meets the standards that we're shooting for.
I think that we did that so long ago, I don't know if all the commissioners even are aware that that exists. That it might be helpful, even, matter of fact, even as far as city council.
Yeah.
I don't even know if all the city council members know that that exists. That might be helpful.
Well, that's a good point. And we'll come back at the next meeting and give you a quick recap of the master plan because it has been a while since it was written and approved.
Several years.
Yeah. So, we'll bring that back, but that's a good point. Okay, so let's go to drive-throughs. So, there's drive-throughs of all kinds, restaurants, banks, drugstores, car washes. We looked at all of those here in Eastvale existing and approved as of May twenty eighteen. So, that includes things like Internet, which is approved but not yet built. And when you include all that stuff together, there are twenty-nine drive-throughs in Eastvale. And here's how they break down. Fast food is eleven of those twenty-nine. Then you go into banks, restaurant, you know, it's broken down here. But what's interesting is that fast food, which is the blue color over here, is less than everything else combined. So, fast food does not dom, well, fast food is the largest category, but it doesn't dominate drive-throughs overall. There's a lot more non-fast food drive-throughs than there are fast food. Breaking down the restaurants, I mentioned of the restaurants in town, about a fifth have a drive-through, the other four-fifths don't. So, just a little data point there. Currently in process, just kind of running down, we have the Merge, which we mentioned, is an active application with five drive-throughs, three fast food restaurants, a drugstore and a car wash. So, those all count as drive-throughs.
Where's the Merge?
The Merge is the northeast corner of Limonite and Archibald. So, it's just west of.
That whole development, okay.
Yeah.
I didn't know it was called the Merge.
Yes. Well, you'll be seeing that later on this year. We just got the application in.
Where's that?
At Chandler and Archibald, we did a pre-application, or we have an active pre-application in for a project with three drive-throughs in it. Hamner and Schleisman, we have a pre-application for one drive-through. And that's north of the ninety-one cent store. We did a pre-application there. The campus retail, we did a pre-application that showed two drive-throughs. So, they haven't come in with their final project yet, but they did a pre-application with two. Lewis, we're currently processing two other drive-throughs and potentially more to come. And then, the Lewis project we have, or I'm sorry, Goodman project, we have one active new application for a drive-through. And I'm sorry, Lewis will only have probably two drive-throughs. But, yeah, Goodman, one active application and probably more to come. So, that total, both actively being processed and going through a pre-application process, fourteen more drive-throughs. So, about a third, or half again, as many as there are in Eastvale.
And Eric, just to, point of clarification, we don't have any in the process for fine dining or the premium casual?
No, we do not. So, as I mentioned, this is really intended to start, just want to answer some of your questions and also just to start that discussion. So, we're gonna make a similar presentation to city council in July. Some other things that need to get done, this is kind of half of box score. It says where we are. The other question then is, well, where do we want to be? And how do we compare with other cities? So, we don't necessarily want to start going out and just like counting every restaurant in Corona because we're not sure that that's where we want to be. But that's the, where really this discussion should start to go is, well, what do we want? I think we all want more premium casual, more fine dining, but that whole discussion about drive-throughs, you know, do we have enough drive-throughs? Do we have too many? How many more should we have? So, all those kinds of things are some issues that we'd like to discuss further with the commission to council. I think we're really looking for both your recommendation to council on what those questions ought to be and then ultimately council giving us direction on how much work they want us to put in on this and, you know, how to continue that discussion both with them and then with the broader community in Eastvale. So, that concludes my presentation. We're happy to start that discussion tonight, answer any questions if we can.
And just so the commission is also aware, at the last council meeting, they authorized us to execute a contract to do a market analysis to identify issues such as hotels, fine dining restaurants and how is the city getting in the way of fine dining? Are the brokers getting in the way of fine dining? Are residents not making enough income for fine dining? What is it that is precluding fine dining from occurring in Eastvale? And then, how, what do we need to be doing to obtain fine dining in Eastvale? So, we have a very reputable market, economic market analysis firm that is gonna come in and do a very thorough analysis over the next two or three months. And then, we'll be able to have that information as well to understand what are we exporting out of Eastvale? One of the challenges we have right now is we have very limited space left in Eastvale and how do we use that space? One of the things that Eric and I were talking about earlier today is that pad seven and eight that were shown in the Palopolis property actually generate more revenue per acre than a fast food restaurant per acre. And so, when we talk about sales tax revenue of being sustainable going into the future, it is, having a pad with three or four businesses in it, is that more profitable or a revenue generator for us to provide services to the residents per acre since we have very few limited acres left in the city? And so, those are some comparisons. A lot of times you'll hear cities talk about per use. And per use, a fast food restaurant outperforms a pad. But per acre, a pad outperforms fast food. And when, when you have unlimited acreage, you don't have to talk about acreage, but when you have very scarce acreage, you want to make sure you're using your acreage at the highest and best use to provide the services for the future of Eastvale. So, those are just some things to consider.
Yeah, it was, we were sitting around at a table looking at one of those pre-applications and when you think about it, the amount of space on a drive-through pad that is non-productive, that it's just the cars stacking up there, is really what tips that balance. Multi-tenant building, it's all happening plus the parking where the fast food, the restaurants and the parking and then almost that much area in just drive-through lanes which aren't producing any revenue. So.
Sure, I'll start. I want to commend staff for putting this together. This is, I think, exactly what we were asking for last meeting. And I also want to commend the planning commission last meeting to kind of push back on an application that was proposing a drive-through. And it should be alarming that currently in process, that fourteen drive-through, that should be kind of alarming to us as the decision-makers here for our city. How did this, you know, basically, we need to ask ourselves, how did this happen? You know, how did we allow developers to propose fourteen drive-through without any, even a casual fine dining or premium casual or fine dining? I mean, so, we got to this point because of certain practice in the past. And I think this is, this is a great fact sheet for us to move forward in. So, I want to commend the staff and I want to, you know, make sure that the council also is, here's this loud and clear from planning commission that we will be pushing back on some of these going forward. And then, I want to kind of give empowerment, empowerment to the staff to feel for the pushback on some of these things. Thank you.
Commissioner Patel?
I just want to share with staff for something to consider on drive-throughs. To add to what Commissioner Lee said is, a fine dining, I wouldn't go to a fine dining restaurant that had a drive-through. I mean, that you, fine dining, you're gonna sit there for two hours. I mean, it's, it's just not the same. Yesterday, I, I'm part of the Southern California Frozen and Refrigerated Foods Council and we had our annual meeting. And it was interesting that the food industry, grocery stores, are going to look at drive-throughs because more and more, and the head of the fresh world of Albertsons from the corporate side, or at least the western region, talked about more and more people are looking for, and all these apps, and I'm not the technology girl, but, you know, they have plated, they have, I forgot all the different brands where you order your groceries. They were a small family grocer where that was part of what they, they offered decades ago, where people would get their groceries and, you know, the little grocery boy would come out and deliver it to you as you're sitting there. But, but it was news to me, so I think from a trend, grocery stores, because of the order online, pickup, delivery, that they're starting to offer because you can get like, with plated, I guess you can order three meals for sixty bucks or whatever and they have it all together and you tell them you'll be there at two fifteen, it'll be ready. And they want to be able to have their customers go through drive-throughs at their grocery store. So, you know, how that comes about, but from a trend, the food industry, Albertsons, Safeway, which they're now the same corporation, but there was a hundred and fifty people in the room and I just, it was a new concept for me. And if you think about, I mean, I like to go get my groceries, but more and more, I'm sure some of you order your groceries, you order the pre-made meals, and they're looking to design this. And they talked about having, coordinating with city and the zoning. And I thought, oh, yeah, that's gonna be interesting because I know where Eastvale's at. So, it's just something to put as a look to find out what's going on because that might, it's not a fast food restaurant. I mean, this is grocery store. So, that's all. Good job, thank you.
Commissioner Chelsea?
I have a couple of things. I like what you said, Brian, that, you know, we really need to be cognizant of the fact of how much property we have left. So, Eric, would that be possible to, you know, we've done this a couple of times over the few years where we've said, this is all we have left for commercial. This is all we have left for housing. Because we, we've seen a lot of projects come and finish. We still have a lot in the pipeline on the reports you give us, but there's a lot of them that are ninety-nine percent done on that list. So, just to kind of get an idea of what do we have left? And we know the Lille property stands out, that's a big project. But we know that there's a couple of small pieces on, you know, Sumner and Schleisman that's been in front of us and we need to look at that still. But we're, we are starting to run out of property. So, when we say we don't have fine dining or casual fine dining, we're starting to run out of places where we can put them. So, the fact that we're going after them is, it's gonna be limited.
Well, and the market analysis will tell us how much actual money we're exporting out to other agencies surrounding us for fine dining. And so, if we get that information and it says two or three million dollars of Eastvale money is going outside of our city to experience these restaurants, that helps our brokers and our developers realize there is either a demand in Eastvale or there isn't a demand in Eastvale. And so, that also helps them recruit those, those businesses. So, we're gonna better understand that. The other component of this market, economic market analysis is to look specifically at the Lille property. We're trying to address a lot of myths and perceptions and get some facts so that we can talk facts about what is left in the city for build-out and from a sustainable financial practices. What are we gonna need to be providing in the future from a budgetary perspective to provide service, services to our residents, but also provide the uses that our residents want to have? And so, the Lille property is one that there's a lot of communication going around. Is, is the specific plan realistic? And some people say yes, some people say no. Some people say how much money would need to be subsidized to make that project a reality? And we'll understand that better. You know, should a mix of uses be on that? And what are those mix of uses? And what is that really, what could that really look like? Will fine dining actually come to the Lille property? We'll understand that, right? And is it because of how the Lille property will be designed? Or, or will it just come on its own, right? Or do we need to identify that and offset that with other uses that help the developer subsidize something? You know, that's how the old model for regional malls, the anchors paid less per square foot than, than the smaller tenants, right? And, but they were the big attractors to help the smaller tenants have the foot traffic. And so, those are the things that we have to understand as, as we're looking to make the Lille property. There's a lot of infrastructure needed for that Lille property to be successful. And so, we need to understand the costs of that as well as the value of the land and then the value of economic revenue that can be generated off of that land so that we can make sure. Because a property like the Lille property becomes the heartbeat of a community, it becomes the downtown, it comes, becomes the place for people. And we don't have that quite yet unless you call it the Eastvale gateway is kind of acting as that right now. But it's not quite a downtown, it's more car-centric and not people-centric. So, those are the things that we're looking at in the economic market analysis. It'll be pretty thorough and comprehensive. We're pretty excited to get that information.
And Brian, when we do that study, can we also look into, this was one of the things that I brought up, is diversity of the food options that we have. Not just looking at the usual chain stuff, but looking at some of the other ethnic groups. You know, our city is changing. The demographics of our city is changing, so let's look at some of those aspects.
Right. And we've heard loud and clear from the planning commission that we have a large Asian population here and we don't have the businesses to support our Asian population. We have a large Latino Hispanic population and we don't have the restaurants and businesses to support that, some of their needs. And so, we need to make sure that we are addressing diversity and the needs of all of our community and residents and not just some.
Good.
But how long will it take for that market analysis to be completed?
We are gonna have the hotel analysis within the next thirty days because we have to make a decision on the Palopolis property. And so, we wanted to have that information. And the rest of the report will be within about three months. Seventy days or so, seventy to ninety days.
And we got these drive-throughs proposals coming before us, before that information comes to us? Pre-application for a drive-through?
Nothing's gonna be ready that soon. So, they're, they're in the pipeline, but they'll, they'll come after that.
Okay.
Good.
Because I was wondering maybe recommend some kind of a moratorium on fast food drive-throughs until that comes out. But if it's gonna be that quick, then maybe we don't need to worry about that.
You're welcome to make any comments and recommendations that you want and we can share that with the city council. I, I think there's been a lot of discussion on, does it relate to the quality of the drive-through establishment? You know, we heard earlier tonight from some of the developers, well, this is gonna be a high, a better drive-through chain than, than this thing. And so, is it drive-throughs period or is it the quality of the drive-through? We need to understand that. Or, is the question that no fine dining exists in Eastvale yet and we want to have at least two or three restaurants before we'll approve more fast food drive-throughs to give the incentive for people? Because we have three or four developers and if they could all work together to find a couple of spaces for some finer dining, then they could have an unlimited drive-through opportunity. And people say now we have, we don't have goose eggs or zeros in those two categories, we can now have more drive-throughs. So, those are the things that we kind of want to understand from you because we're, we're getting, we're getting a lot of speculation of what you guys are trying to intend from the developers and what the community is wanting to hear. So, if you are able to speak with people in the community or reflect on that, we'd really like to hear that information from you so that we can provide better direction to the developers so that we don't put the target on our back and then you get frustrated with us that why are we getting so many drive-throughs on these projects that we can provide pre-application guidance that, hey, you better find a fine, fine food drive-through establishment or, you know, whatnot. And so, we need to really understand what that looks like and get clarity on that.
And I think what we've been pushing for the last couple of years, I mean, the residents have been clear and we have not been able to deliver. I mean, and, and we, it's hard to explain that to them why Trader Joe's doesn't want to come. So, you know, they're looking for higher-end stuff. They want, they don't necessarily want fine, but I know premium dining has been asked for over and over and over.
Well, and, and part of the, the information is, is are we telling a story of Eastvale in the past or are we telling a story of Eastvale's market analysis today and in the future? And, and so, we hear a lot about what can't be done in Eastvale, but what we'd really like to know is what can be done in Eastvale or what would it take for that stuff to occur in Eastvale? And so, we're asking questions a little differently in this market analysis to really understand as a city, what do we need to be doing to bring those kind of things that our community and our residents are asking for? If it is a Trader Joe's, what do we need to be doing and is the community willing to do that for a Trader Joe's? And so, we need to really understand those things. You know, there's a lot of people that'll say, you know, a fast food restaurant has to be, had an interchange. Well, we have fast food restaurants that aren't even close to the interchange, right? We have them being proposed a long ways from an interchange. So, when fast food restaurants were originally created, it was supposed to be freeway and interchange serving and they have now infiltrated all communities, right? So, we, we kind of need to understand what that is going on. We've also heard from county board of supervisors, they had, one of them held a meeting within the last couple of months about some of the, Riverside County has some of the highest public health issues in the nation and especially in California. And as well as we have some of the worst air quality and our, our fast food restaurants or lower-quality food restaurants contributing to that or not. And so, the county board of supervisors asked, asked city managers and mayors to really consider some of those things about what this means. And so, there's a number of people that are having the conversations and we just really need to understand, we have, we need to understand from our perspective, a lot of times we'll have developers provide an economic market analysis and we want to make sure that the city has our own economic market analysis to verify all that information and to realize how we can partner with our development community to provide the best developments to our residents. Hold on, they need to open up some public comment.
I have one question. Do we know, has our median age increased or decreased now that we are almost, you know, sixty-five, sixty-seven? It used to be thirty-two. Are we now thirty-one or thirty or are we thirty-three or thirty-four?
I don't have that information right off, off the bat or how we're trending up or down. So, I, but we can, we can look into that.
From an economic standpoint, I mean, it's ob, I mean, that's a key element because the younger you have, people, especially in our community, have families, little kids, they don't have time. So, unless, just from knowing other consultants, unless we're starting to go to the age of thirty-three or thirty-four and being older, it's who we are as a city and I just don't, I mean, it'll be curious to see, but that's been, from what I know and restaurateurs that I've spoken to, is it's all about convenience because we have the young families. So, until we start getting older, that fine dining, just, it's the disposable income, it's the time, you know, just from overall economic development, that's what I have found, so.
Yeah, no, I, I think there's some market trends that are going on different, you know, people are, the generations are getting lo, wider. So, instead of them being shorter, you know, people are having kids older, they're, you know, we have some of the highest disposable income in Riverside County, so.
Southern California.
And in Southern California, we're one of the top places to raise families. So, we have a lot of things going for our community. And that doesn't mean couples that have kids don't have time to get a babysitter and still go out on a date night. And are they going on a date night in Corona or Ontario or Upland or Ranch of Cucamonga? Or where are they going on, where are they spending their money? We had an individual that was a public works director from Montclair and when they were recruiting him, they took him to a fine dining restaurant in Upland, right? And, and I can tell you, I was not taken to a fine dining restaurant for my recruitment here.
Did you go to McDonald's?
We, we had one meeting in Starbucks, right? And so, but those are the things that, you know, when we have people that are opening businesses and they want to do business deals, sometimes they're not wanting to go to a fast casual, they're wanting to go with something a little bit nicer, something with a white tablecloth, something with a wine list, something with menu specials. And all the cities around us have those kind of restaurants except for Eastvale and yet we have some of the highest disposable income and whatnot. So, we really want.
I would really challenge, I, I think that median age is one of the factors.
We'll, we'll definitely ask the, we'll definitely ask the economic market analysis if age is it or if it's rooftops or what. And Karen, Commissioner Patel, we want to make sure that we're getting the facts on, what are the things that we need to be showing in our area and what do our brokers need to be saying to get the right things here?
I'll make my part quick and easy. I've always hated drive-throughs. I've always been vocal about drive-throughs. I've yelled at developers on this dais about drive-throughs. It's obvious we have enough drive-throughs regardless if, you know, there's a need for it, that, I mean, the presentation sort of talks about that. for it, that, I mean, the presentation sort of talks about that, our size and demographics, um I I believe i- I mean, it doesn't fit, I mean, I know the demographics and we have a higher disposable income, um I'm probably closer to the median age than than everybody on the dais here, honestly, I don't.
Thanks.
I don't shop in Eastvale.
I resemble that.
Yeah, if I if I wanna if I wanna take my family out, I go to, I go to Chino Hills, I go to the shops, I spend most of my time there, I I play Pokemon there too, but um but, you know, in, yeah, but I mean, in comparison to the other cities, the market analysis, I think, would be a a great value uh with that comparison, um and I'm willing to say, you know, we're probably trending towards other undesirable cities in the analysis than, you know, let's say, Chino Hills or 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 Walnut or or surrounding cities because of all the drive-throughs, on top of the car washes, on top of the gas stations, you know, let's just put more liquor stores in a in a gun store on each corner, I mean, that's very real because there is a cultural landscape to how we develop our city, right, ten, fifteen years down the line, you know, the people that wanna buy homes, right, who are we attracting later, each each city is a market, right, we wanna maintain that high median income, right, that that fast-paced sort of environment where everybody sort of can enjoy family and everything, but still have the convenience, so, the demographics is is definitely um changing, but, you know, not towards drive-throughs, it's it's towards either casual dining or above, so, that's that's something that I'm very vocal on, um as far as the the work later with um council, I would probably suggest a collaboration meeting, if there is, I mean, possibly between commission and the council, and maybe even pulling in developers and members of the public.
Yes.
To get a sort of a a full, broad view of it, so, that's my comment.
Yeah.
So, we're we're we're, are we gonna skip commi- commission communications?
No, I got two things for commission comments, yep.
You got two things? Uh we'll start with Commissioner Lee.
All right, um just, I'll make it quick.
Chair Chairman, did you wanna do public comment, cause some people came to listen to this conversation?
Oh, I'm sorry, on this one, huh, okay, I'm sorry, is there open public comment, is there anybody like to comment about this?
Um so we.
Do you ask me to give the mic?
We have the merge, um we're in a situation where, one, I would say, it would be, it would be interesting to add sales revenue at the restaurant locations, cause I think, at the end of the day, people vote with their wallets and they vote with their money, and so, if you're gonna make a determination of what's acceptable, what people want, I think you gotta go where the dollars flow, right, and you gotta look at it and say, well, where are people spending their own income, and so, I think you gotta consider that fact, and so, you'll find that some of these fast food stores are some of the most successful drive-throughs in all of the, you know, these corporate corporations' portfolio, so when people are voting with their wallet, I think it's, I think it's something you have to consider, right, I mean, pe- people are making that decision and spending money, and that's, that's, that's shows something, uh number two, I'm pleased to report that we are about the CEO of Sprouts coming back into town, two weeks to finalize the lease for a building that we're doing in Eastvale at Limonite Archibald, I can tell you that I'm sitting here very fearful of the economic viability of doing our project because we're losing about four million dollars doing a Sprouts deal on our project, because we're 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 anticipating the possibility of doing a coffee place and then two drive-throughs, and, you know, unfortunately, you know, unless you're subsidizing, you know, what a Sprouts are paid by another use, we can't do a Sprouts, you know, and and part of this money is, you know, we're doing Limonite Archibald, we've got six million dollars worth of infrastructure to put in, you know what I mean, it's not the city that's putting it in, it's it's us that has to take the burden of paying that cost, so at what point at a developer that we're sitting here saying, we're taking loss of Sprouts, we're putting six million dollars of infrastructure in it, and we're trying to put in two restaurants to help make it viable, to offset doing those things, and what are we doing, we're entertaining doing drive-throughs which are what, the most popular things in Eastvale, you know what I mean, and some of the, some of the, you know, headwinds you guys have in terms of a city, and I grew up in Maraga, Maraga doesn't even touch a natural freeway, it's in the Bay Area, University of Warren Creek, Lafayette, um the issue is, is that you're sixty-five thousand people, during the day, sixty-three thousand are either in school or or working somewhere, so, there's no lunches, you know what I mean, we're, and and we're, we're, we've got actually another issue, we're in the flight path, so, we're literally having to lay buildings out so that if we land a fine dining restaurant, if a plane crashes, they don't hit this fine dining restaurant that has all these things, you know what I mean, and so we've got these issues, and I sit in here as a developer that has had a really wonderful experience working in East- Eastvale, losing sleep at night about signing the lease with Sprouts, because I don't know how I'm gonna offset all these costs, you know what I mean, and I don't know who's gonna come three miles from the freeway underneath the Chino Airport flight path, you know, to eat at the first fine dining, so I hope they don't throw the baby out with bathwater, I understand there's a need, I can tell you that I personally sit up at night looking at Yelp reviews from the surrounding areas, San Gabriel Valley, Northern Orange County, cause I I also enjoy these types of restaurants to eat, I live in LA, you know, there are a lot of mysteries about living in LA, I do have a lot of food restaurants around me, you know, and so I I s- I'm I'm approaching those people directly, I'm trying to deliver to the city what they're wanting, do you know what I mean, but but at what point are you gonna sit here and say, Grant, thank you for completing a hundred million dollar project at the campus, you're about to build another seventy-five million dollar development, you're taking huge loss on Sprouts.
Okay, I think your your three minutes is done.
Well, you're.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We hear you, we hear you, and we make the decisions based on each thing that comes forward, but we still have to look at, and it might not be that property, we've we've done, we've made decisions on property that we would have not made based on the way the property was cut up, and we're happy that the developer did what we what we not necessarily wanted, but he was willing to take that and go with it, so we'll look at, we look at everything individually like that.
And I'll provide a couple hundred restaurants that I'm gonna approach personally, and there's two columns that I'll deliver to you, it's gonna be, will you go to Eastvale, right, and then will you go to our site, you know, and I'm and I'm gonna personally be calling these restaurants, and I personally have been reaching out to all these owners, private owners, all these types of restaurants to deliver, so, and Michelle Neeson, I don't have as much experience with Brian, but and your staff has been incredible, but we're not, we're trying to give you what you want, do you know what I mean, and so, for instance, Sprouts.
Well, then, don't bring in drive-throughs, please.
But you don't care about whether or not.
Public comment is closed.
You don't care whether I think all this is, you know what I mean?
Yes.
Well, I mean, to 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 respond, to respond to, I'm sorry, public comment is closed, you're not helping your case, that, to respond to to the comment by him, um you're you're talking to a a a commission that understands all of what you just said, um we understand very clearly, we understand a very, I mean, the history of it, um the the, at least for me, I can't speak for them, um if you want what's best for Eastvale, don't bring drive-throughs, that that's all I have to say for now, and and that's just my one comment, and and vote possibly later on, um so, moving on to commish- commission communications, um Commissioner Lee?
I I just have one, um so, I sit on the Atlanta Empire APA uh board, uh we have, we're trying to do something with the planning commissions around the 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 region, um you guys have attended, or Howard and um Larry have attended one of the, one of our sessions, uh networking sessions in the past, but we want topics to discuss, so, if you know of any topics that you wanna discuss with other commissions around the area, uh feel free to let me know, so that we can address those things, and we wanna have like a quarterly or like a, at least a couple times a year uh meetings uh with the, all the planning commissioners around the area, so.
Grocery stores and drive-throughs.
Okay, noted.
Commissioner Patel?
Yep.
Commissioner Shoson? Uh the first question I had was to Eric, I saw, I got, I received an email from uh, I I think he was the reverend at a, an orthodox, I think all of us did.
Oh, yes, that one.
Did 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 that make its way to you so that we can answer his question on property that may be available, he sent it to all the planning commissioners and said, I don't know who to reach out to.
Could you forward that to the other, I don't believe I saw that.
Can you forward that to him, Howard?
Yeah, I'll forward it to you.
Yeah, forward it, I'll be happy to get back.
I I mean, just, I did a little research on what they're requesting, I mean, just my personal perspective, it's a little weird what they're, sort of the establishment, so I'll I'll forward it to you and you'll see.
Yeah, just, I just wanna make sure we at least answer it, you know, answer the email.
Yeah.
We either have property or we don't, I mean, you can buy whatever property you want, and then, you know, make sure the zoning works for it, but the question was, it was unique, I don't remember get, we don't get too many emails like that.
Okay.
And then, my other uh question or comment was, and uh and we've spoken about this before, but I would like to have Mario from Code Enforcement come to one of our meetings because we still don't have clear definition on what the code Code Enforcement power actually is, and the, a deputy sheriff was at my uh, in my neighborhood yesterday, went into one of the neighbor's homes because he parks a a utility trailer on the street, and we can't make him get rid of it, he runs outside, gets in his truck, backs the truck up, hooks the truck up to it, now he's not in any violation, and all he has to do is move it every three days, he's been there for three years, and he's done this over and over and over, but yet if he had a motor home that hooked up to the back of his truck, it could still be there only three days, so our rules, we need to figure out, how do we make our rules more consistent for the people that are outright trying to get under our rules or away from them?
So so um so there's, I'm hearing two separate i- i- issues there, one is, we we ha- we have a a a crack in one of our rules that may be being abused, and so we might need to review one of those rules a- and and make sure that it applies consistently to utility trailers or 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 what it what it includes, a- and then, uh the second thing I'm hearing is, is that you'd like an update on on what our Code Enforcement is, city council just recently uh um approved, a- and we've hired, uh we have a senior Code Enforcement officer, uh Mario, we have a Code En- uh Code Enforcement Officer, Chris DeHesa, uh who just started uh within the last two months, a- and then we have Jared, um who who is a Code Enforcement technician, and he started uh last October or Novem- late late October or early November, I believe, um and so, we are gearing up our our Code Enforcement, we are in the process of hiring a street sweep, swi- swi- street sweeping officer, a- and then, in the budget, we have another one uh being brought on after July first, if if adopted by council, so our Code Enforcement team is dramatically changing, and I think it'd be a great opportunity to have an update to Planning Commission uh on what they are doing uh reactively and proactively uh to address a number of things, um but, uh we proactively addressed a whole bunch of political signs along Limonite, um a- and 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 worked with some private uh ho- uh property owners to to remove those signs as well that didn't have permission to be on their property.
No, and that, that's great news.
And we're cleaning up the weeds right now along Limonite, we cleaned up the weed le- weeds uh uh at um.
You just cleaned Owl's Corner yesterday.
Yeah, Owl's Corner yesterday, and so, a- a- and the delays there were as a result of, uh we rely on CAL FIRE crews, and they were deployed uh to fires, and so we were ke- kept getting bumped uh week after week while the fires were going on, and so they finally had a break in some fires, and they were able to, uh for cost-effective r- reasons, that's why we use them, um they were able to come out a- and perform those duties, so w- we are, we are working to address a number of the issues, and and as we're staffing up correctly to uh address the community expectations, you'll see some changes with Code Enforcement and what you experienced with Code Enforcement.
And and the biggest issue we're having, Eric, and you you're aware of this, is we haven't had a stable Code Enforcement for quite some time, we we get somebody that's running it, then that person leaves, then somebody else comes in, and we had one a a few years ago where she said, we really needed to strengthen some of the Code Enforcement rules we have.
Right.
So that we can enforce it, I I don't really know if we ever did, if that was completed or not.
So so one of the, one of the projects that we have going on that will start this summer is to update our our zoning code and our Code Enforcement rules, and so, um uh that is something that we are gonna be sitting down with Eric and his team, our Code Enforcement team, our Public Works team, and we are addressing our, in our law enforcement, and we're gonna address everybody's concerns and identify ways to strengthen our our code so that we have the necessary teeth to do what our Planning Commission and our City Council is expecting of us.
Perfect, thank you.
And so, uh a number of those things are uh things that are holdovers from the county, a- and um we adopted those documents, um but uh as Eastvale becomes its own city a- and and matures at at the age of eight now, um um there is a time to reflect and update some of those things from the county and make sure that they're addressing the values and needs of of Eastvale, and so that is a a priority, and we just needed to staff up and and get the people trained and and operational and and the needs of the community, so you'll see some uh things moving forward in the near future on that.
Thank you.
Yes, we're exci- we're excited to have Mario and his team on board and 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 hopefully we can stabilize that uh department and and have some consistent resources that you guys can get used to uh oh and and be very proud of.
No comment? No? Okay, well, I don't have any comment, except, I mean, try to get Andrew Shuck back, I miss him, he was a former, I mean, he did Code Enforcement, cause I sat with him for a while, and he he's great, but he's, he did well, he trained Mario, so, Mario's doing great too, actually, he he he, did he show you the picture of the 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 half, half of a cat that I, that I neighbor submitted?
Yes.
Oh, you saw that one?
Yes.
Okay, that was from me.
Okay.
I promise I didn't eat him, just kidding, that's a joke, that's a bad joke, anyways. So, we'll adjourn this meeting if there's nothing else.
Mr. Chair, uh we we jumped over, I don't remember eight, I did have just a couple quick things.
Oh, staff report, sorry, we're we're getting like antsy here, okay.
Just really quickly, cause I know, I know it's late, reminder that uh we'll have another full agenda on July eighteenth when we meet again, uh in your package tonight is a status update from May, the June update just got sent to the clerks, so that'll be in the council's package next week, so you can download that and see an update of what's, what all's going on, uh reminder that Costco grand opening is next Thursday, so, a week from tomorrow, uh they'll have a really brief ceremony, but uh they they just like cut a ribbon and then, okay, start chopping, so.
Be there, be there early and on time because the ceremony will last less than ten minutes and and then you, i- it'll be done, so if you wanna experience it, don't show up late.
I'm excited, I'm also excited about In-N-Out too.
And then, the the last thing I wanted to do tonight was just.
Existing drive-through.
The last thing I wanted to do tonight was just um for the commission, thank my staff for all the work they've done, we had a huge agenda tonight, it's been non-stop work here for the last few months, Peter's head exploded a few weeks ago, and we had to bring him back back down to earth, but they've really done incredible work, a l- there's so many projects going through and a lot of things happening at the same time, and I think we've maintained the same quality that we always insist on, so, just wanted to thank them for doing all the work that made this package possible.
Agreed, oh, thank you.
Thank you, well, with that, um we're, well, we thank staff, staff does a great job, especially with the transition, I mean, welcome aboard, Brian, um you're gonna be the new interim in in a couple of days, right?
Uh it'll take effect June twenty-eighth or twenty-ninth, whenever uh Michelle's last day will be, then I'll become the interim city manager.
Cool, yeah, we hate to see Michelle go, but we're glad we have you on board, um but, thank you all for for everything, uh thanks for audience to.
Welcome aboard to Peter and Myra.
Yeah, oh who, oh, oh, sorry, Peter and Myra, sorry, I promise I will never forget your names, Peter and Myra, welcome, well, with that, we'll uh adjourn the meeting, and our next regular session is on July eighteenth at six PM, correct?
Yes.
Okay, median jerk.